July twenty seven, two thousand and twenty one, regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at six oh five P M. I'm going to ask our city treasurer to do the invocation. And I'm going to ask our city clerk, Carmen Avalos, to do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, let's get started.
All right, I like this one. God grants us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference.
Thank you. If you will please all join me in saluting the flag of our great nation and after me, join me. I pledge allegiance.
For the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to you both.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We'll do roll call. Councilmember Montero.
I.
Councilmember Patterson.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember English.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we got we have the presentations. The city clerk.
Thank you. So item number three is a presentation on customer service training. Interim city manager Norris will proceed with introducing our presenter tonight. I would like for all of the public and for the presenters to be aware that we do have a ten minute time limitation. So if they could please adhere to that limitation so that we can continue and have a very smooth transitioning meeting. In advance, we thank you for adhering to the timelines. With that, Mr. Norris, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. South Bay Workforce Investment Board will present a presentation regarding customer service training. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jan Vogel or Chris Cagle. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Chris Cagle. I am the Regional Affairs Manager at the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. And Jan Vogel hoped to be here, but since his regrets because he is stuck on the freeway, he can't get to a phone that has good reception. So we apologize for that. However, I am prepared and ready to share my screen if I may. Is that okay if I do that?
Yes, here sit up.
Okay, here we go. And let me do it like this. One second here. And like this. Okay, are we? Can you see everything? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. So what what we'd like to show you today is customer service training that we believe may benefit your employees. And for those in the public that might be watching, the Workforce Board, what we do essentially is help people find jobs and help businesses find workers. And we provide this as a service to the community and we operate out of four one-stop centers throughout the South Bay. So what Jan wanted me to explain is we have been operating a course called Blueprint for Workplace Success. And we've been doing that for a number of years and a lot of the colleges in the area were offering that course. And many of the adult schools also offer it and we provide it to youth and all of our participants that go for through our program. And it's basically how to get a job and how to keep a job. But within this course, there's also training on customer service. So because of COVID and over the last year, we have been moving all of our training to online and remote offerings and access. And so this was one of the things that we've been working on for quite a while. Not only did we take some of this out of our blueprint course, but we expanded it and created a course that has ten, ten lessons in it. And what Jan wanted to do is offer this course to the city and your employees at no cost for maybe six to six months to a year. But even beyond that, the cost would be nominal if if you want to continue using it. So the the outcome here is your participants, your employees will will learn about how to fulfill the needs of customers in a highly professional way. And many of your employees, I'm sure, are very experienced and well-educated and for for them, it will be probably more like a refresher course for them. And it'll provide some exercises to help them build their skills and refine the things that they may already know, but gotten a little weak on it over the years. And so I think pretty much anybody who takes this course will find value in it and it'll be something worthwhile for them. So the format is online. It's a mobile-enabled self-paced. And it's a collection of slides and exercises that the individual goes through as they make the way through the different sections. And there's a pre and post-assessment at the beginning and end of the course. And then depending on on what what you would like to do at the end, we can score these quizzes and report to you what your employees, how they scored, how they did, and we can even create a pass fail scale if you'd like. It would be up to you. The lessons, there's ten things that come with this course. You know, a lot of these things are, you know, they're 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 common sense things, but sometimes we forget and and there's a lot of a lot of examples in these courses and and it provides a lot of a lot of ideas that you can take back to the workplace. So what customers want, it's just going to be about what what customers expect, an overall positive experience. And the first impressions, there's components of of what that includes. When you're dealing with a customer, positive attitude, communication skills, importance of body language, tone of your voice and your speech patterns, listening to your customers, being an active listener. And telephone customer service skills, handling a difficult customer. As a as an example of a tip in this chapter, a way to 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 view a difficult customer is not if they come to you angry or upset about something, it's not that they they can't still be satisfied. It's an opportunity for you to help that customer and deliver their their needs and correct whatever their their issues are. And that dissatisfied customer can become a happy customer. So it in that chapter talks about different techniques for turning things around that may start off difficult. Last impressions, it talks about the importance of of your impressions upon people as you deal with them. And then the chapters one through eight is all about the content and then chapters nine and ten are about reflection on what you just learned. So there's different exercises in those final two chapters to help the employee understand how to apply some of the things they just learned in those first eight chapters. Now, at this point, depending if you want us to go further, we could match the employee with one of our staff that could role play with them a little bit and maybe give them some experience in how to handle a difficult customer, like we would be the difficult customer and they'd get a little interaction with us. We can we can add that as well, or we can keep it entirely online if you'd like. So the enrollment's easy. You just would give us the the individual's name and email and we'll send them this app, this not an application, but an enrollment page where they can log on. And then an example what the slides look like is here and some questions. It's it's a a collection of slides and text that they read with exercises that they do, which are generally multiple course, multiple choice questions and a couple narrative things that they have to write. And then on the back end, we can track everybody's progress. So we'll be able to see if someone is logged in and if they're making their way through the course. And and we'll be able to view their scores and be able to identify whether or not they're having a difficult time with it. And if they are, then we can jump in and assist them. And then after they've completed everything and successfully passed the quizzes, then we will provide them with a certificate. And we can tailor this certificate to reflect the city. We could put the the city logo on here and and change the design a little bit if you'd like as well. And that's that's it in a nutshell. And here's our contact information. And again, Jan Vogel just wants you to know that we're happy to offer this service to the to the city for up to a year at no cost. And there's no limit to how many people you can enroll. We're happy to assist you in delivering this course training to your employees. Thank you very much.
To the chair.
To the chair.
All right, Reyes and then Valentine. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Chris Cagle, thank you so much for your time. Please give my regards to Mr. Jan Vogel. I think it's a great idea. More importantly, customer this is a customer service campaign that we currently have is of great importance to us all here on on the leadership. And it's also important, as you know, Vaughn and department heads, that we've been working hard to address the 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 customer service campaign. So I like the whole idea of how you're following folks to assure that they're taking advantage of the opportunity to learn and grow. I think the phone etiquette is important, but I just wanted to touch on, you know, the customer service that's 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 given to the constituents because we are a different entity unlike most. Our constituents are the ones that we want to ultimately service and satisfy the businesses as well. However, I think it needs to be critiqued in a way that we address our constituents. We as council members get those calls each and every day. We ultimately make the relationships with the with those constituents and and obviously we have the know-how to do that. But I like the simple facts that the the workforce could take advantage of the weekly training possibly and and just making improvements all around. And I even want to take the course. I worked in a call center. So I understand the importance of customer service, more importantly, appeasing those and leaving a positive response. You know, on the engagement that occurred during that call. So I understand how important it is. And so thank you for your time. Thank you for offering this program to us. I think it's a good program, six months to a year. I want to ultimately have Vaughn and and our department heads assure that our customer service is constituent-based as well as business-based. And so all of that is good information. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I could add also, Jan had attended a board meeting and heard you talk about customer service. And that was what led him to think about this, working for your city, and he called Vaughn and that's how we how this all came about. So thank you for that. And one thing I forgot to mention is the overall course will take about three or four hours, probably. So if you want an idea of what time investment the employee has to make for this.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Cagle. Thank you so much for coming. It's always a pleasure. So I wanted to ask you specific questions about the length of the course. Now, you're going to allow the city to have six months of of free service. How many employees could be could we service during that time or is there an unlimited number?
Right now, it's unlimited. That's right.
Okay, so so what you you're saying each course takes about four hours.
Well, the the entire class takes about four hours. So there's ten chapters and you know, yeah, depending how fast you are at reading, you could get through it pretty quick, I think.
So 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 again, we can train, if we wanted to, we could train all of our employees. Am I correct in that six-month time?
Yes, you can. And actually, Jan, you don't have to, you you can, he said up to a year. It's it's okay if you want to take longer. It's okay.
That's very generous. That's very generous of the South Bay whip. And I'm I'm just delighted that we're going to have a chance to do that. This is every time the South Bay whip conducts courses, they're always very valuable to the community. So I'm certain that it's the course is very is is excellent and and very, very customer service-based and very good for the community. So I'm happy to endorse it and I will ask Vaughn to go go ahead and and make arrangement arrangements with the South Bay whip so that we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for making it available, sir. Thank you for presenting.
You're welcome.
I support you. Thumbs up.
Yeah, sounds good. All right. Item number, thank you, sir, for being here, Mr. Cagle.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number four is a presentation on the local travel network. Mayor Pro Tem. You have the floor. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. I am very pleased to present Jackie Baccarack, Executive Director of the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, who will introduce the Local Travel Network, a concept which invites cities to facilitate the burgeoning market for small local use vehicles. And I see she has Erin Baum with her, who is also one of the gurus on this subject. So Ms. Baccarack, please go ahead.
Thank you. We also have Wally Simbep here and we're going to share the presentation. Erin is going to put it up. Erin, if you can put our presentation up. I wanted to men, this is a study that the CAG just finished. We had a Caltrans grant to look at these burgeoning the burgeoning use of these local use vehicles. And we're talking about all kinds of different small vehicles. And we're not talking about rentals. We're talking about people that are owning them. So these are the variety, not just bikes, not just scooters, not just little cars. Next slide, please. The local travel network is something that we want to create in the South Bay. It would be regular streets that we already have. There's two thousand miles of streets in the South Bay. We would take two hundred and forty-three miles approximately and create a network where you could go from place to place on a dedic- on a on a dedicated network. It wouldn't be a dedicated roadway. It would be a network that's signed. It'd be they would be the streets would be safe and efficient. And if there were slow-speed vehicles on them, people would know that that was a street for slow-speed vehicles and they would address frequent destinations. And I'll get into where they are. We're talking, we're not talking about road diets. We're talking about sharing the road with other vehicles who will know who will know to drive slower because there will be a lot of slows slower vehicles on the road. There's also, there are very few places in the South Bay where we have what's called islands, where there aren't streets that connect. And we will would have to create some special lanes for those, but those will be let down the line and do not, I don't think they affect the city of Hawthorne. Next slide. This is the universe. On the left, you see the universe of all of the slow-speed streets in the South Bay. We're talking about not the arterials. We're talking about the local streets. And we got, we did extensive work in moving to what you see on the right, which is actually the slow-speed network. And we'll get more specifically to Hawthorne in a minute. But you can see what we've tried to do is create a network where you can travel. If you were on a bike, you could go from Inglewood all the way to at least Lomita or or Carson on this network and it would be safe, signed streets that you could do that on. Next slide. What it is not and what it is, it's not rentals. It's not all those dockless things that we're hanging around. It's people who own them. And I want, I didn't say at the beginning, there are eight hundred thousand cars in the South Bay. And many people own multiple cars, but we know that they're not going very far. So if one of the multiple cars they owned, they used instead a scooter or or a small, the small neighborhood electric vehicle, they would be able to use this network and not pollute and not and and not have the problems getting around. So we're sharing existing streets and it's a vehicle diet, not a road diet. And now I'm going to call on Wally to talk about some of the features of this. Next slide.
Hi, yes, I'm going to talk a little bit about the benefits and not all of you know, I'm sure, that the CAG has been studying land use and transportation for eighteen years, since two thousand and three. And along the way, we did a couple of vehicle demonstration projects and that produced just a ton of data. So that is what underlies what we're talking about here. So one of the, just touch on highlights on this, but one of the benefits, of course, is reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And we know from the science community that we've got to reduce current greenhouse gas emissions levels by fifty percent by two thousand and thirty in order to avoid catastrophe. And the local use vehicles that Jackie's talking about are key to this because they are the least expensive zero emission vehicles that anyone can buy. So we can sell many more of them for the same amount of money that we could we could spend on internal combustion engines. Reducing congestion. Well, it turns out that twenty percent of the streets carry eighty percent of the traffic. And so what we've done is try to reroute some of that onto low-stress streets that are low speed and low volume. So that should, A, reduce some of that traffic that's on the on the major arterials, but also the vehicles we're talking about are smaller, so they simply take up less space no matter where they are. The idea that they have high utility, as Jackie mentioned, our studies show that seventy percent of the trips taken in the South Bay are three miles or less. So we hope that you would join us in trying to promote the idea of right-size your ride. And the benefit of that is that your residents would also save a lot of money on mobility because they don't need all of those cars parked in the garage ninety-five percent of the time. Okay, parking, I know, is an issue. We've talked quite a lot with Mayor Pro Tem Valentine about parking in Hawthorne. And it turns out that, of course, these are smaller. I mean, they're tiny and an e-bike is small, obviously, compared to a car. But even a golf cart kind of thing is is small. And just to invoke a terrible word, RAINA, our Regional Housing Needs Assessment, is going to add twenty-five hundred vehicles to the city of Hawthorne for their residents in the next nine, eight, nine years. So same time, we're trying to reduce greenhouse gases by fifty percent. The state is forcing another twenty-five hundred vehicles into Hawthorne. So Erin, let's go to the next slide. So and now that I've said they were RAINA, they're they're mandating thirty thousand new homes in the South Bay by two thousand and thirty, which will bring fifty thousand additional automobiles. And a lot of them will go down Hawthorne Boulevard looking to get on the freeway or get off the freeway. So again, if we can take some of that traffic off, that's a good way to absorb all of these new vehicles. Street safety, well, we know that speed kills. And so what we're talking about is trying to transition a lot of those trips from what vehicles that go forty, forty-five, fifty miles an hour speeding sometimes on your streets to vehicles that cannot speed on your streets. They are, they are speed limited to ten, fifteen, twenty miles an hour, maybe twenty-five at the most. So we can slow the whole thing down and we're not putting them on, we're not mixing speeds on the same street exactly where you take a fast street and then stripe it with a bike lane or or some what we call a love lane on the side. We're we're really trying to put the slow vehicles together, slow devices on a slow-speed street. And finally, I want to talk about the fact that this is perhaps the most important. But the market for these local use vehicles heated up in two thousand and twenty with the with people staying closer to home, which makes sense. But the state this year has also passed a law that says CARB Air Resources Board is going to have to offer rebates on e-bikes. And they are, we've spoken to them and they're working on this and they'll have an announcement of the program by the end of this year. But like it or not, these vehicles are coming. If you're going to start writing down five hundred dollars on each one, a lot of people are going to buy them, as well as there's a federal program that offers tax rebates. So these are just some of the things to think about. We can talk them later if you have any questions. Erin's going to go ahead and talk about the actual network and how it hits Hawthorne.
Thank you very much, Wally, and thank you very much, council members, for your attention to this. I'm the program manager for for this, and indeed, we are considering this as a program, a mobility program at the CAG. So what we hope to see is me interacting with your staff, Public Works Department, Planning Department, to review the maps, the proposed network that we have, look at the data layers, route segments, and the estimated cost for this. And to help and work with you in terms of moving these forward where there is actual funding to to do this, this this kind of work through Measure M funds that are available. These, this kind of work, we we believe will begin sometime soon, even as early as this fall. So what are we talking about with Hawthorne? I thought we would give you just a little So what are we talking about with Hawthorne? I thought we would give you just a little taste of this uh, as what we have proposed as the local travel network going through the city of Hawthorne. The purple lines represent the, uh, the network itself. Uh, this is a route refinement of conceptual ideas that we had and over the course of a year and a half came down. Having actually field tested this, I actually, uh, rode my bike or drove an NEV through your city using this network.
Mr. Baum, you have one minute left, sir?
Certainly. Okay. The network itself is, is neighborhood through neighborhood through destinations. And I'm going to turn it over to Jackie to finish us off.
Yes, I, you can take a time maybe to see the, uh, the network. We passed a resolution, the South Bay Cities Board did, and the resolution supported this network. And then also directed our staff to work with city staff to strongly re- uh, to, uh, create initial segments and work on implementation of this network. The resolution doesn't obligate any cities to implement it, but we would like to work with cities in order to start this network, which is fun, can be funded through Measure M. Next slide. Uh, what we're asking of cities is to review and endorse and amend the route segments because we did our best, but you know your city. Develop an implementation budget and that budget includes striping streets and signage. It really doesn't include a lot more than that. Uh, we will, we're trying to create a uniform signage package for everybody. And then work with us on continuity between cities so that it became, becomes a network for the whole South Bay. We would like when COVID is over, we would like to have promotional events, which would include ride and drive events where we actually show how this works. And, uh, and then supporting grant applications. Along with this network, because we're going to, we're encouraging, uh, micro mobility, we would look with the cities to help put in charging stations where, uh, they make sense. And this, these vehicles charge on one-ten. And also, this is going to reduce your need for parking. And so, uh, if there are places that you would like to double, you know, shorten the parking with these vehicles, you can create more parking in some of your neighborhoods that are having, uh, parking issues. Next slide. We have a story map, which includes a survey. And we would love you to, I hope that your staff will, will, um, give the presentation out so that you can study the streets and also take our story map, uh, use our story map to learn more about this. And then we hope that we can work with your city staff and start developing initial segments in the city of Hawthorne. And we'd be very glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from our, from our team?
I have a question. But I, I actually have a comment. Um, uh, thank you, Ms. Baccarack. Uh, thank you, Mr. Baum. Thank you, Mr. Simbabb for, for this, this presentation. Um, I, I, it would, unfortunately, we didn't have enough time to really get into it. But I hope that it gave everyone a taste of what, uh, of, of what this, uh, travel network could look like. Um, I would like to ask, um, and I would like to give a directive to ask the, um, city manager to work with your staff to, um, to im- to, to attempt to implement this program. Uh, and, um, and, uh, is this, is this the appropriate time to do that? I'd like to get that from, from the city, city attorney.
We do have a couple more comments, but I, 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 I think, I sense that we may be supportive of this fully.
Well, anyway, I would like to, to give a directive to the city, uh, city, uh, city manager, if I may, at this time. Uh, to, to go ahead and work with these, uh, the south, with the South Bay Council of Governments to, um, bring this in front of the council so that we can see exactly what this would look like.
That would be fine, as long as it's not opposed by anyone, so.
Uh, Councilmember Montero and the, and then Councilmember Patterson. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ma- um, thank you, uh, Jackie and, and your team, uh, for bringing us the, uh, travel network. Uh, it's, it's excited news, uh, because yes, we do want to slow down our traffic in our city. Uh, and I think maybe this is could be one of the options that we would have because, you know, a lot of people go so fast in some of our streets. And like you said, uh, especially, you know, um, even when you look at Hawthorne Boulevard and goes, you know, all the way from Hollywood all the way to, to PV. So we got big streets that could, that connect to South Bay, so it is good. Um, just for, for the, um, I don't know if Ms. Valentine has the map of Hawthorne, uh, that, that, uh, your staff put together, because in my presentation package, I got the El Segunda one.
Um, I do not have it yet, but I understand that it's available now. Is it, is that right, Ms. Baccarack?
We've given it to your staff. Yeah, the presentation we just did, your staff has.
All right. Yeah, because I would like to see that map, uh, you know, so what, so I can, but definitely, I'm, I'm supporting the, the network. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson and the Councilmember English. Go ahead, Councilmember Patterson. I can't hear you. Okay.
There we go. Uh, I had a question about the type of vehicles that would be encouraged with the use of this network. Uh, so that I see, would it be like golf carts, smart cars, uh, scooters? What, what were the type of vehicles? I'm curious.
We're looking at vehicles that go twenty-five miles an hour or less, which means it would not be, smart cars are actually full speed vehicles. But neighborhood electric vehicles, like nicer golf court carts, bikes, electric bikes, uh, scooters, um, whatever, electric skateboards, anything that people are using that are very dangerous on regular streets, but that don't go more than twenty-five miles an hour.
So, so golf cart?
Mm-hmm.
I like that. Okay.
Yeah. I call it the first and last vehicle, golf carts, because they're great vehicles for students. Uh, if you don't want them on the freeway, but you want them to get to high school on time. And, and they're also good for seniors who can't push the accelerator and plow into something. So, uh, they're, you know, and they're also very affordable. So we think they're really great vehicles to promote in our cities.
Let me add that we also have a video of, uh, electric unicycle, believe it or not.
Okay, Councilmember Reyes English?
Thank you so much. Um, so for, for, for myself, uh, Vaughn and staff and city attorney, I'd like, uh, obviously a legal confidential. I'd like to see what, uh, we're working with with regards to the type of, uh, uh, apparatus, if you will, uh, transportation. I do know back in twenty eighteen, the city council took a vote of, uh, no scooters in Hawthorne. And I understand also that, um, the liability factor, you know, considering that these are open, uh, vehicles and, um, something to be concerned on. I understand that there's potential dollars available for this type of, uh, implement, im- im- implementing something like this that all, all ultimately has a, um, a positive, uh, response with regards to, uh, green gas and, you know, uh, electric and car and things like this, which we already have some charging stations across the street over at our Marriott hotels. And we have other charging stations, uh, in other areas. However, um, I'd like to get some more information, um, what the cost is, what type of staff we would need to do the additional changes to, uh, the perimeter of our city with regards to signage and stripes and things like this. So all of this is good. However, I'd like some more information from staff and I'd like, uh, ultimately, um, you know, hear, hear exactly what we're, what we're talking about on a staffing, uh, level.
Councilmember English, it was our understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that what the cities have done is, is, um, ban rentals, but not scooters. If someone in Hawthorne wanted to go buy a scooter, you would not have banned that. You would have only banned rentals. And we are not promoting rentals with this network at all. We're only talking about ownership vehicles.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation and we appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to, uh, oral communications. Pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine by four point three, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for further study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. We did not receive any, uh, written communication, uh, for tonight's meeting, Mr. Mayor. However, we do have, uh, three speakers who would like to, uh, address the city council. Our first speaker is, uh, Mr. Uh, Rudolph Varga. Mr. Varga.
Hey, Mr. Varga, can you hear me? Okay, um, go ahead and do your comments. You have three minutes. Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Varga, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can you start over? I'm so sorry. Hold on. Okay, can you hear Mr. Varga?
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Varga, you're on.
Yes, hello. Uh, good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen. I have some, uh, questions and concerns about, uh, the traffic flow and the study that was done on One Twentieth Street between, uh, Prairie and basically Corn Blum Avenue. I know there was a study done. I don't, I haven't heard anything, uh, further than the study. I noticed you guys did put a, uh, another, uh, speed, uh, indicator on the corner. Uh, I would also like to know, I was, uh, concerned about maybe possibly putting in the street light on the corner of Corn Blum. And I also brought it up with the, uh, what was that guy's name? With Donnie from Public Works, I had a meeting with him. He came out, uh, I really appreciated his time. Uh, I s- made some suggestions, possibly like, uh, what you or not you guys, but what the city did over in Wiseburn area, over in Villar, on One Twentieth, uh, they converted it into two lanes. And they made a dedicated bike lane. Um, I think that would be a great idea for One Twentieth all the way down. Uh, the racing and, uh, flow of traffic is just insane, uh, with the speeds. If it was made into a one lane, it would drastically slow down everyone that they forced you. The racing would stop because there's no more side to side. And, uh, I think it would be a great improvement, maybe possibly doing a dedicated bike lane as well. Um, something needs to be done. It's, it is insane the way that these cars are driving down the street. Um, my kids are afraid to come outside and play. Uh, their, uh, residents are concerned of it as well. There's been numerous car accidents. And, uh, other than that, I love my city. So, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Ms. Elizabeth. Ms. Elizabeth, uh, go ahead. The city council will now hear your comments.
Okay, wonderful.
Can y'all hear you?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Go ahead. They can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished council members. My name is Elizabeth Guerrero and I live on One Sixteenth Street. I would like to, I would like to clarify Resolution eight-two-eight-six from your council meeting on July thirteenth. I, our street consists of nine homes on the north side of One Sixteenth with approximately thirty or so residents living here. The residential side of the street occupies about twenty-five percent of the entire street and the rest of the seventy-five percent is occupied by businesses. Our community is although small, but is still a community. All our homeowners have been here for over ten years and have a pretty good understanding of what's going on and what our concerns are. Monday through Friday, businesses are open for most part. Half of the people either work or conduct business here on One Sixteenth. The other half are homeless parkers that are just in the area to hang out. However, on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, businesses are closed and our street now becomes an open parking lot in a free-for-all from five AM to nine PM. All the concerns and questions come to light. Non-residents and homeless parkers sit across the street for long periods of time and serious, it's a serious concern. They smoke, they stink up the entire street. Prostitution is a commonplace. They sell drugs, turn on loud music, urinate, deathfully, wash themselves in plain sight and trash the street. Most of the street on, most of the trash on the street is from the weekend parkers. All this becomes a serious health and safety concern, which is why we are asking for your help. We would like to take a moment to thank the Hawthorne Police Department. They do an incredible job. Without their support, it would be out of control and we appreciate them so much. In the past few years, the city has heard our concerns and has assisted in approving our request. And we highly commend the city in support of these proposals. It has made a big difference here in our street and we have more work to do. This, this is not a preferential parking request. This is a request to put out a fire that's been isolated. We appreciate the suggestions of, of trimming the city trees. The trees, uh, the trees actually beautify and soften our street. The problem is year-round, not just in the summer months. This measure will not address the issue at hand. During the cooler months, the pattern continues on a yearly basis and because the street is accessible. We are confident the approval of this ordinance of no weekend parking will greatly improve the health and safety of our street and our community. Therefore, we are asking the Resolution eight-two-eight-six to be voted and passed with everyone's approval. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Elizabeth, for sharing your comments tonight.
Ms. Avalos, real quick, uh, Vaughn and Alan Leon. Alan Leon?
Yes, sir.
Alan? Okay, um, ad- admittedly, this is really a heck of a lot more information than we got on the staff report when this came to us. And I don't know if the, the group, the community group could have put this as part of their petition too. And, you know, this, uh, this entire summary that, uh, Ms. Guerrero just put, so, um, I would be willing to reconsider that, but please incorporate all the comments that she made too. You know, uh, I think she gave us a better explanation than our own staff did, but, um, I would just, uh, Alan, can you just go ahead and work with them and then we can revisit it? Or if?
Yes.
Yeah, that's pretty.
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
But, Mr. Mayor, this is Alex Montero. Anyway, like, how come, how come I did understood the, the request? Uh, the last time, I, I specifically mentioned exactly what this lady Elizabeth just spoke of. I, I put it to you, all of you, uh, on the, on, on, on July thirteenth. There was a health and safety issue and even I forced, uh, Alan to mention the prostitution thing because I knew that was going on because those nine signature was the homeowner that lived there. And then all the rest, seventy-five, was business. So it was, it was, it was clear to me. So how come it was not clear to, 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 to some of you?
Okay, well, you know, that's why I'm asking.
But don't blame the staff.
No, Mr. Mr. Montero, I'm asking staff to incorporate the comments that this individual just mentioned, okay?
Yeah, but you started blaming the staff first.
No, but I'm not always going to go by your recommend, your interpretations of things, okay? So I'm going to ask staff to go ahead and include this.
So maybe some of you need to do your homework.
Well, thank you for your comments and maybe this needs to be some comprehensive explanations with regards. Thank you for your opinion, Mr. Montero. Let's move on to the next.
Welcome.
To the chair, to the chair. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, uh, the key, the key point here is, you know, the assistance from the police department. And that was something that we did discuss in length. We talked about addressing the prostitution. We talked about adding additional lighting to the area to ensure that it had more, uh, you know, lights. We assured that, you know, vegetation was cut back. We also made sure that, uh, the curb was in a way, uh, supported with some type of signage, if not, you know, uh, painting of the curb to show we didn't have longstanding, uh, vehicles. We suggested a, a green curb. We just, just discussed maybe a yellow curb. There was supposed to be an assessment, so, um, we need staff, Alan, to bring back, uh, a remedy. And, um, I understand, obviously, the concerns of the community. There's lots of similar concerns in other areas of our city. And we all know how desperate folks are for parking, uh, a need for parking, to find parking. The concern here is it's, we know it's a, it's a weekend issue. It's a Saturday, Sunday issue. But at the end of the day, we can't just, you know, um, take every concern, if you would, and just, you know, say ultimately that this has to be red curb across the board because of the public safety concerns. And so thank you to the police department for making this a hot, uh, a hot item issue that you're continuously monitoring and reviewing. And, uh, we need to find a way that there is a collaborative effort in addressing everyone's concerns, not necessarily, uh, taking away, uh, parking needs for other community, um, folks as well, so. But thank you.
Uh, a quick final comment from, uh, Councilmember Patterson. I know you had your hand up and I don't want to like disregard you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I, I agree. I think we should look at all the, um, everything that we can possibly do before we decide to take away parking. It, it's obviously something we do need to pay attention to and, and, uh, take some action against. And I believe we discussed a lot of different ideas the last time, so, uh, I definitely support exploring all options before we settle on the need to take away parking. Because, you know, there, there are a number of neighborhoods that are facing some, some challenges. And, uh, we obviously can't go straight to just taking away parking because of our parking issues in general, so.
All right. Everything's well appreciated, well appreciated from everyone. Yeah, yes, definitely just want to get explicit reasoning. Yes, definitely just wanna get explicit reasoning from the public as to why they're requesting something. Go ahead, Ms. Avalos, the next speaker.
Thank you, next we have Mr. Tyrone Thompson. Mr. Thompson, are you ready?
Oops. Okay, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, you have three minutes, you can go ahead and start.
Hello, Mayor Vargas and council members, my name is Tyrone Thompson, I'm a resident of Hawthorne and a lead on the Ahmad Policy Alliance that helps run the Hawthorne Coalition. Our work is dedicated to ending secondhand smoke in the city of Hawthorne. And we, we meet virtually on the third Wednesday of every month at one PM. Our coalition, our coalition is helping, is having a virtual town hall meeting on August twenty-fifth and September eighth of two thousand and twenty-one at six PM. And we would like to invite the City Council members to join us on September eighth and all residents of Hawthorne to at both dates. Hawthorne residents will have the opportunity to have their voice heard on Secondhand Smoke. For more information, you can, you can visit www.amad.org. Ahmad is spelled A-M-A-D. I want to thank the council members for having this place for me to share and I hope to see you guys there.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, can I just make a comment?
Yeah, let's make it super brief.
Yeah, super brief, I didn't even know there was such an organization, association, Secondhand Smoke. So thank you for the information, Mr. Thomas, please forward the information to me at Angie, A. English at City of Hawthorne, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Patterson, you had, you just had your hand up, okay. All right, thank you, was that it, Ms. Avalos?
Yes, that is all we have for tonight in terms of speakers.
Your consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, Mr. Mayor, there are six items on consent calendar, we have items seven through nine as well as items twelve through fourteen for your consideration and approval. Item number seven is approval of the City Council minutes for the regular meeting of July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one and the special meeting of April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Item number eight is approval of waiver of full readings and resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item number nine is the City Treasurer's request approval of the warrants. For item number twelve, there is a speaker tonight, so this item will be moved and voted on after the consent calendar items. Moving on to item number thirteen, it's a resolution, Resolution number eight two nine one. It is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing an on-street parking space on the south side of one hundred and forty-first Street and twenty feet east of Hawthorne Boulevard for the exclusive use of the physically handicapped. Item number fourteen is Resolution number eighty-two ninety-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one as Women's Equity Day in the City of Hawthorne and it is here for adoption. Mr. Mayor, may I have a motion at this time to approve items seven, eight, nine, thirteen and fourteen?
I make the motion?
Second.
Okay, the, I think the, it's gonna go to Councilmember English on the second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thought I heard you just a little bit faster, okay, but go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Montero.
Hi.
Thank you, Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously with a five to zero vote on all of those items during consent calendar. Item number twelve, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution. Resolution number eight two eight nine is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne approving the Hawthorne Municipal Airport, Airport Noise Exposure Map Update and authorizing the Director of Public Works to sign and submit the documents to the Federal Aviation Administration for their review and acceptance. At this time, we have Mr. Corey Lewis of the Kaufman and Associates. He will provide further information on this item, Mr. Lewis, you have the floor, please proceed.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I'm here now and like to get permission to share my screen.
Yeah, sharing your screen, sir.
Is the Hawthorne Municipal Airport Noise Exposure Maps Update slide visible?
Yes, sir, it looks good.
Good. Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for letting me to join you here this evening. I'd like to give a, an overview of the noise compatibility planning efforts that the City of Hawthorne has undertaken. First, we'll do an overview of the noise compatibility program. So this is a voluntary program that the city initiated, actually has participated in the program since the late nineteen eighties. The current noise compatibility program for the City of Hawthorne was adopted in two thousand and seventeen. The Noise Compatibility Program, or NCP, includes measures to abate noise, aircraft noise, control land use and, and implement and update the program. Areas that are eligible for mitigation assistance are defined by the Noise Exposure Maps. The NCP measures are then submitted by, to FAA for review and approval. And once approved by FAA, grant funding may be pursued to implement the mitigation measures. As I mentioned, the City of Hawthorne has participated in this FAA voluntary FAA program since the late nineteen eighties. The noise exposure, or the Noise Compatibility Program was initially adopted in nineteen ninety-four. Noise Exposure Maps were updated in two thousand and fourteen. And as I mentioned before, in two thousand and seventeen, the Noise Compatibility Program was approved by FAA. As part of that record of approval, FAA stated that due to the aircraft operational and fleet mix changes since two thousand and fourteen, that FAA recommends that the City of Hawthorne review, revise and update as appropriate the future NEMs at the earliest opportunity. With that recommendation, City of Hawthorne initiated another Noise Exposure Map Update, which began in November of two thousand and nineteen. So we're at the, at the tail end of the Noise Exposure Map Update. As I mentioned, this began in November two thousand and nineteen. We had a, we began with a public workshop and we also convened a planning advisory committee. We had the second meeting in February of two thousand and twenty, also with a public workshop and a planning advisory committee meeting. The Planning Advisory Committee was made up of elected officials and other members of the community and airport users to provide input on the study materials. Shortly after the second meeting, the pandemic began and, and during that time, we were able to use that time wisely. We submitted some preliminary materials to FAA for reviews. We made revisions to the document based on FAA input. And then in February two thousand and twenty-one, we had our last public workshop, which was a virtual workshop that was held over four weeks, three weeks in February two thousand and twenty-one. We also held a virtual planning advisory committee meeting. We took that information and updated the draft Noise Exposure Maps document, which was available as part of your packets. Next few slides given over, this slide gives a comparison of the base year contours from the previous Noise Exposure Maps update, which was, that base year was two thousand and twelve, this base year is two thousand and twenty. FAA states that you have to do a base year and a five-year forecast. So this is a comparison of the two base year contours. They are shown in what is called the CNEL, Community Noise Equivalent Level Noise Metric. That is how the, the map is generated through FAA software. And that is the sixty-five CNEL Noise Contour, which is FAA's required threshold of compatibility for residential land uses. In comparison with, for the, the outcome of the, the two thousand and twenty and twenty-five CNL Noise Contours, the outcome of this study are these two sets of contours. As I mentioned, there's CNL, Community Noise Equivalent Level, and that sixty-five CNL contour is the threshold of compatibility. So the maps that you see here delineate the areas that could be eligible for mitigation assistance. This table summarizes the number of parcels, dwelling units and population that are within the sixty-five CNL Noise Contours. See, the two thousand and twenty, number of parcels is fifty-two and it increases to ninety-one with the five-year forecast. In, in the previous set of contours, we began at fifty and dropped to thirteen parcels. The reason for that is the elimination of stage-two aircraft, which are older, noisier aircraft that were eliminated from the nationwide fleet in the last five years. So with the elimination of those aircraft from the fleet, the noise contours, even though operations increased, the noise contours got smaller. And since then, there has been an increase in jet activity at Hawthorne Municipal Airport, which have, which has resulted in an increase in the size of the contours. So with this, we counted not only parcels but also dwelling units to account for parcels that have multiple dwellings on the parcel, so if there's a, it's a duplex, it's one parcel but gets counted as two dwelling units. And then the population is multiplied by the census, which assumes two-point-nine-six people living in each dwelling unit. During the February two thousand and twenty visit, we also conducted noise monitoring. There were eleven noise monitors placed underneath the flight tracks for Hawthorne Municipal Airport. Six of the monitors were within the City of Hawthorne, two were within LA County and three monitors were placed in the beach cities. Two important things to note about noise monitoring are that per FAA, noise monitoring results are only used for comparison to the noise contour modeling outputs. So we generate the noise contours with FAA software and then we, you can take measurements and we can compare the outputs. Also per FAA, the noise monitoring results cannot be used as noise contour modeling inputs. So it's really only a comparison to the output. As part of the, as I mentioned, as part of the noise monitoring, we had three noise monitors in the beach cities. This was an additional item that was added after the, the project was initiated at the request of some of the planning advisory committee members. So as you can see here on this map, there, there was one in Hermosa Beach, one in Manhattan Beach and one in Redondo Beach. What you're seeing is radar flight track data that was provided to us through the study from LAX through their robust radar flight tracking system. The dark blue tracks that you see are known to be from, operating to or from Hawthorne Municipal Airport, while the light blue tracks, which dominate the screen, are from other airports. And I'll go to the next slide. This table breaks out the percentage of those, of those flight tracks. And you can see in the very left-hand column, HHR represents Hawthorne Municipal Airport. So the, those, and each row represents a day of flight track monitoring. So you can see that it ranges in those times, in that time period from six-point-seven percent Hawthorne of the total to thirty-five-point-four percent Hawthorne for the total. And what this represents is that, you know, most of those overflights and a lot of the complaints from people, particularly in the beach cities that were receiving, a lot of those overflights are from aircraft that are operating to or from an airport other than Hawthorne Municipal Airport. Particularly here, you can see that San Diego accounts for a lot of the, the overflights and also, or primarily San Diego, which is represented by SAN in the center of the screen. So with approval of the Noise Exposure Maps, the city would then submit this document to FAA for acceptance. FAA reviews the document and would ultimately, if, if, if once satisfied and any revisions are made, would provide a letter back to the City of Hawthorne indicating acceptance of the Noise Exposure Maps. At that point, the City of Hawthorne would have the opportunity to amend or update the Noise Compatibility Program to address the impacts that are outlined within the contour. That amendment or update to the NCP requires an FAA grant. And once that document is updated or amended, the city would then have the opportunity to pursue FAA funding to implement any noise mitigation measures. Throughout the study, all of the, throughout the process, all of the information developed as part of the study was available on a project website, which is shown here, and that can also be sent out to anyone that's interested. Are there any questions?
All right, do we have any questions for this? Let's see, Montero, Reyes, Mayor Proton, and then Patterson, go ahead, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can the gentleman go back to that map that it shows the project twenty twenty-five? Yeah, that map. All right, so. I'm not doubting the study because, you know, it was very intensive study and, you know, a lot of big book to tell you the truth, kind of a little bit hard to understand. But I'm kind of a little bit skeptic about the result of this, of the noise study because, you know, I live right on Ramona and Broadway that is, you know, basically one, two blocks west of Hawthorne Boulevard, right? And when you're talking about that the noise level have decreased because of the, of the small angels that used to have before, it's not flying anymore, so now we have more jets and, and the Cessnas. I'm telling you that I've been living in, in that particular area for twenty-three years. And this past, you know, couple of years, the noise have increased, I can tell you, by a hundred and twenty percent. Jets and planes taking off, all kinds of hours, even at twelve, one PM in the morning. And believe it or not, when you're talking about those other noise from that airport, believe it or not, I'm kinda like saying, we don't, I don't hear those noise, the only noise that I hear is from the LAX jets taking off, the red-eye flight that takes off at twelve, twelve-thirty in the, in the morning. You can hear those, what, because they make this boom sound when they're taking off. But our planes from the Hawthorne Airport, I can tell you the noise to me have increased one hundred and twenty percent for these past couple of years. So this study, when it goes, the, the yellow goes almost to Hawthorne Boulevard, believe it or not, those jets now are taking off on a speed that goes up to my townhomes and makes tremendous noise. So all these planes are making more noise now than, than in, in the past. So I'm kinda like very skeptical about this, this contour cooperation because if, if we're gonna do noise litigation, for example, the, my street, my complex would not be count based on FAA litigation zone because it's, it's not part of that yellow line. So, and I'm telling you, the noise goes beyond that yellow line, tremendous noise. Can you comment on that, sir?
Yes, so that is a very similar comment that we received throughout the study. And, and, and in, in talking with neighbors, neighbors in, in the public meetings and in the, in our sessions online, you know, by participating in a voluntary Part One Fifty study, the City of Hawthorne has to use Part One Fifty rules. And, and what that means is that our threshold of compatibility is only up to that sixty-five CNL Noise Exposure Contour. So that is where, that, that doesn't mean that FAA thinks noise stops at that line. It is only the area where, you know, it establishes eligibility for mitigation funding.
And who, who determined that sixty-five number?
Yes, so that has been codified in the Code of Federal Regulations for many years, so since the early nineteen eighties. And actually, there is. Uh, and actually, there is, there is movement and interest uh among Congress to start looking at uh potentially changing that. It's it's pretty, I would say it's in the distant future, but there are, there are discussions about that, about changing that. But changing that threshold requires Congress to to make the change.
So so can uh can we get more information about that? Because I would love to love to lobby my congresspeople that changed that because because I think from nineteen eighty to now, that that's ridiculous. So there had to be change. Because I think that that sent sixty-five is no longer is no longer valued because because we having experienced tremendous noise nowadays. Uh, and and even me, I have the experience that one little plane land inside of one of my townhomes. Take care. So I'm telling you, uh, I I'm surprised to see that that line is not extended. So uh but I I understand the law. So thank you for 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 clarification. I appreciate it. That's him, Mister Mayor, for me.
Hey, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and then Reyes English, and then Patterson.
It was me.
Was it you? Was it in that order? Okay, I I put them, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Uh, Mister Kaufman and Associates, thank you so much for the presentation. You see my little arrow right here? I live right there.
Oh, I I don't, I'm unable to see it.
I live, I live right off of one twentieth. So right in, right in the center of your yellow and blue line.
Okay.
I'm right there.
Okay.
So um, I want to know, how can I receive F F A uh grant monies to soundproof uh our homes? That's what I want to know. And how can, how can you help us do that? Because L A X just received uh residents near L A X just received twenty point five million dollars from the F F A A to soundproof their homes. And uh, based off of that, they're roughly gonna get about six million for Los Angeles. And El Segundo, there's gonna be five million for Inglewood and nine million for the incorporated area. I want to know, how can Hawthorne get some of those uh those dollars to soundproof their homes? And yes, there are some changes that I believe need to be uh need to take place. And we understand that's a federal agency, which is in our congressional uh leaders. Um, however, because of uh many new uh businesses coming to Hawthorne, one, our stadiums uh next door to um L A X, uh, excuse me, uh, to Inglewood, we already know the um importance of Hawthorne Airport when it comes to uh choice, right? Where folks want to ultimately uh land and make it easier, especially especially those celebrities. The celebrities already know of Hawthorne's airport. I say that. So how can we? There's nothing more I think we could do about this. I I I understand that. And 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 sometimes, you know, we don't take staff recommendation, right? That's what we're supposed to do as far as um have discussion, have debates. Uh, however, we probably not gonna even be able to change this, even if we wanted to as far as uh sending this the so-called report to to the F F A F A for for ultimate um resolution, what have you. But speak on um assisting us with the soundproofing.
Yes, definitely. So um the the steps that I outlined earlier, uh, so if if the N A Ms are approved tonight by uh city council, uh, Public Works Director will sign them, submit them to F A for acceptance. Those will be reviewed by F A uh once accepted. Um, then they'll they'll provide a letter and it will outline the next steps. And it will say, it it is, it will likely say that, you know, the next step is to amend or update your N C P to take action on these new contours. Your contours are smaller, these are bigger. Uh, your current, the city of Hawthorne's current noise compatibility program outlines a uh property acquisition program within the noise contours. It doesn't have any information. There's no measures related to sound insulation. At point, uh, you could request from F A uh uh a grant to amend or update the noise compatibility program. Uh, in 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 some cases, you know, you uh maybe in this situation, you would just want to amend. Um, so really just focusing in on your noise mitigation measures, potentially looking at um changing that from property acquisition to sound insulation. Um, so that would be the next step. Once that is amended, circulated through F A, then you would pursue funding uh for to implement uh noise mitigation.
I would ultimately like to have your assistance in doing that. And city manager, our attorney, and our airport uh department head over there, if you're on, please know that ultimately we want to uh amend this and have ultimately a request for that. So thank you so much for your time, sir.
Mayor Protem and then David Pat- uh Councilmember Patterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Mister Kaufman. It was a pleasure uh working with you um on the pack. And uh, thank you for this great report. I wonder if you would go back to the the slide where you compared the noise generated by um our airport versus the other airports in the beach cities.
Uh, did you want to see?
Yeah, I I I I wanted, yeah, that was the one.
Okay, yes. So I would would just one quick clarification. So this is comparing a number of overflights from Hawthorne versus overflights from other airports rather than noise.
Correct. Thank you. So um, if over the course of time, um, I recognized over the course of time that many, many of the constituents in the beach cities complained about our airport because they thought that the noise, that the increased noise they were getting was coming from Hawthorne Airport. So I'm just very gratified to learn. And also, um, you know, not that, not that I I want them to experience more noise, but they were so convinced that the noise was coming from Hawthorne Airport. And I think this kind of shows them that there are so many other airports from which this noise was being generated. And the the percentage of noise from our airport was relatively minor. So I'm very gratified by that. And I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that they they feel, um, you know, so that they have, they now have better information as to where the noise is coming from that they were experiencing. And um, I I wanted to follow up with uh also about the sound insulation. I think you 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 came to the conclusion there are about three hundred homes affected by um by this being within the sixty-five C N E L. Is that correct? About three hundred?
It's uh, it in the twenty twenty, the base year, it's one hundred three homes and three hundred and five people. And then in twenty twenty-five, which is the five-year forecast, one hundred forty-two dwelling units and four hundred and twenty-one people.
So the sound insulation, those who would be eligible for sound insulation would be in the twenty twenty uh section?
It would be um in the twenty twenty-five, so looking at the five-year forecast.
Okay. And then how many would that be total? Is that about four twenty-five, four twenty-one?
Uh, yes, four hundred and twenty-one people. Actually, it would likely be more than that because F A allows a process which is called block rounding. Um, so rather than uh, if we look at this, uh particularly on the north side of one hundred twentieth, um, as we're looking there, um, as as you go to the uh west toward the uh west end of that block, you can see that the contour, uh, I'm not sure if my uh cursor is showing up here. But you can see that the contour cuts diagonally across the block. Um, usually F A will allow what's called block rounding, and that would extend over uh farther to the west. So that one neighbor, so if you have a neighbor who's in the contour, the next neighbor is not left out, and so you could extend down to the west.
So you have the, you have the um the actual parcels that this would affect. Am I correct?
We do, yes.
So so when the time comes, if, you know, we, once we get the approval and the funding, um, there would be no problem with us finding the people who would be eligible for this.
Correct. Um, so parcel database that we have has property ownership information, uh, addresses and um and we we
I would like to see that.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, thank you. So I just want to clear something up. So this update uh would be used as a tool to secure funds from the F A A in order to, based on our current plan, expand the airport.
Uh, so not any sort of physical expansion uh in terms of a runway extension or anything like that, but the uh operations are forecast to increase. So just the amount of activity is anticipated to increase. But um, that is only just through a forecasting uh process, and F A uh approved the forecast increase. Uh, not in a way that they are um stating that they are allowing additional aircraft to operate there. They are accepting the methodology used to uh uh evaluate socioeconomic conditions and uh other aviation industry trends, which indicate that operations will likely increase in the future.
You made a statement that one of our um plans that are in place, forgot the name of it, um, only allowed for property acquisition, not for um noise mitigation.
Uh, correct. So the noise compatibility program, the city of Hawthorne's noise compatibility program, which was uh adopted in twenty seventeen, has a noise mitigation measure, and it is property acquisition. So when you go into a noise compatibility program and you can start looking at um different mitigation options, in some cases, it makes sense to purchase uh a property. The uh city would purchase the property, would um remove any land use and compatible land uses from it um and then sell the property. You know, actually, would uh oh, an additional step would be to change the zoning. So it would be zoned for uh land uses that are compatible with airport development or with airport noise, uh such as commercial, industrial, something like this. And then would resell the property, uh, and then the funds would go back into the uh to support the airport.
Got it, got it. So um, we would have to amend that that program to allow for funds to use to give people uh soundproof windows and such.
Yes, yep. And then there's a whole, of course, a whole process that goes along with uh a noise mitigation. There's, there's a, you know, identifying the the residences is just the first step. And then there is developing a sound insulation package. Um, so it would be, you would look at the types of homes and the types of construction uh for those homes and then develop a package that um would best address the issues for those homes. And then there is uh sound testing, um, which involves putting a placing a microphone inside the house and a large speaker um outside the house and determining what the current uh difference between the outside and the inside uh noise level is.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Was there a final comment, Councilmember English? No?
I'm sorry. Um, no. Thank you so much, Mayor. And thank you, Mister uh Kaufman Associate. What was your name?
I'm sorry, I I I logged in with our corporate account. My name is Corey Lewis, and I'm with Kaufman Associates.
Okay, thank you, Mister.
Trying to change the name, but it wouldn't allow me to do that.
Yeah. Now, you'd be a very important person, Mister, if you're Kaufman Associates.
Okay.
My my coworkers may take offense.
I make a, I make a motion. Uh, I'll give it to Councilmember Montero. Okay, so uh roll call vote, please.
Thank you, uh, Mister Mayor. We have Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protem Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Thank you very much.
Should pass this unanimously. Thank you very much.
There are, okay, item fifty, there are no public hearings tonight. And there are no ordinances tonight for consideration. So, okay. Uh, we have general matters, item number eighteen, Mister interim city manager. Uh, presentation from Jack Wong. Development permitting report. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Um, tonight, we're gonna hear from Jack Wong. He's founder and C E O of uh J W A Urban Consultants. The firm was established in two thousand and four and provides municipal consulting services in the areas economic development, city planning grants, and project negotiation and management. Mister Wong was retained in January two thousand and twenty-one to provide the city of Hawthorne a comprehensive report regarding business license and development permitting procedures. At this time, I'd like to bring Jack Wong to the meeting for his presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you very much, Von, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, my name's Jack Wong, and I'm uh pleased to be here with you virtually uh to make a presentation on this report. Uh, as Von indicated, um, I was contracted with the city uh back in January to uh look at the permitting process for business licenses and in the development permitting process as well for uh planning and building and safety. So if I could share my screen, I would like to go through a short PowerPoint presentation.
Go ahead, sir.
And uh, do you see this?
Yes.
Okay.
Looks good. Go ahead, sir.
All right, um. So the scope of work um that I was tasked to work on was really to highlight and focus on uh the the permitting process within business licenses and development permitting. And it focused on the three different city departments, primarily the licensing department, of course, and the planning and community development department, and building and safety. Now, of course, there's other city departments involved in the processes, but these are the primary departments that I focused on for these two types of processes. And the idea was to focus on what are the issues that are being experienced, the challenges, and how can they be addressed so that we can improve the overall process? Meaning that time delays are resolved and uh permits are processed efficiently and the applicants or customers are treated in a respectful and courteous manner. So uh, that was my overall scope of work when I started this project in the city of Hawthorne. I just want to point out that it did not address things like personnel issues, human resources, staffing, um, uh, ca- capacity and 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 such. And also, it did not include the uh land management system because that apparently is something the city has already embarked on. And uh with Tyler uh intergov systems uh with a new land management system that is in development, and I believe in training currently with city staff, and hopefully to have it rolling out and being operational uh later this year towards the end of twenty twenty-one. And I think that would be a really beneficial tool for your staff to have at their disposal. And it will tremendously, I think, impact the overall process and should help the um permitting process for both business licenses and development permits. The timeframe was really in February through May, and then in May to to now, basically, it was drafting and finalizing the report. But over that course of time, I initially started with interviews with city staff, of course, in those three departments, and met with the department heads on various occasions, sometimes with some of the staff, um, frontline staff as well. And I also interviewed uh fifteen different private stakeholders, uh individuals who have gone through the process of either obtaining a business license or obtaining a development permit for building and sa- like a building permit. And I sometimes, some of these applicants had done both. And we were, um, all these meetings were done virtually because of the pandemic. But it was um very enlightening. Uh, the interviews were very candid, and I appreciated the candor that the applicants provided. Um, the interviews with staff was very, also very open and candid, and we discussed at length the process that's currently employed. And through that discussion, we identified certain areas that mutually we we understood were areas that were challenges, were bottlenecks, and could be addressed and should be addressed. Were areas that were challenges, were bottlenecks and could be addressed and should be addressed in further detail. And these were identified later in this report as well. Now, the interviews with the stakeholders were all confidential and I assured them that I would keep everything um. Confidential, that their names wouldn't be mentioned or uh telltale signs as to who they may be by address and and such. But um. They were very open with their discussions with me, which I think was very helpful. Uh let me start with the business license department and then afterwards, we'll talk a little bit about the development permitting. But currently, the um operation and business license uh from staff interviews and talking to the stakeholders. There really is no issue with the current way it's being operated, it seems to be operating very fine and and efficiently. There were hiccups in the past and in the past, I'd say in the last couple of years. But those have been uh addressed and resolved by. Uh technology and staff application of time to uh the permits themselves, the applications now. Recently, the city um used monday.com, a software. To help staff track business license applications. In the interim, while the intergov system is being developed. So the hope is to rely on this software, monday.com. For the interim until we have the land management tool in place. Now, talking with the licensing director, he did mention that ever since monday.com has been initiated. At the beginning, there were some hiccups, some issues with the rollout. Some of the staff members were not aware of of the presence of monday.com. And um didn't know how to access it. And similarly, the fire department, the county fire department. Although they knew about it, they weren't able to access it because of their own internal firewall within their computer system. So those things have been addressed, um and and uh you know, the fire department is now getting it. The old fashioned way of just uh an email with attachments. And uh monday.com internally, the staff now understands it and knows how to use it. And because of that, the backlog that developed in different departments. Albeit just uh maybe fifteen or thirty applications, they were quickly resolved and expedited. So currently, there's really no backlog at all with the business license operation. With the exception of some old applications, which I'll address later on in this presentation. But the ongoing operation of business license is is hitting the, it it's hitting all all cylinders. And it is, there's not really not a problem there in this department. In the development permitting, um this primarily involves two departments, planning and community development. And the other is building and safety. And with development permitting, we're looking at basically applicants or customers. That are your residents, your businesses, uh developers from outside of the city, uh seeking um. Land development permits, you know, uh they wanted to build a project. Or they're looking to remodel their house. But um it involves basically these two departments, although there's other departments involved like public works. And fire department, police department, but these other departments, they kind of um they they're. They get involved later in the process, but the entire process encompasses these two departments here. The processing time. Uh for for the discretionary and non-discretionary projects. They're they're looking like they're, they they fall within what's expected in the standard of, you know, comparable studies of other other cities. Uh you know, for a a non-discretionary permit, these are things that do not involve planning commission, they're not. You know, anything that would require a public hearing, these are things that are uh allowed by code. And they only take approximately one week, generally, they could be done within. Uh sometimes even the first couple of days when staff receives the application and the per and the plans. But at times, it does take longer, i- i- they, it may take a week, sometimes up to three weeks. The discretionary applications, they're a little bit more time consuming because these do go to planning commission. And they're a little bit more complicated. And because of that, they take more time, but again, even the um. The four to eight weeks, two months to process the uh the plans. Or even sometimes three months, it's not out of line. Uh with the other studies of other other comparable cities, how how much time they take to process similar projects. Now, I I want to say ca- a caveat in that it's not just simply a matter of sta- of staff time. Looking at plans and 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 um it it really depends also on the quality of the plan that they receive. And the better the quality, of course, the the fewer hours would be expended on reviewing. And if you were uh rechecks or resubmittals, which always takes more time, the more times you resubmit. The longer it will take, so you know, it it's a situation where. The quality of the plans coming in is very important as well, but. Overall, the processing time within um community development for the planning entitlements. Is is pretty standard and um again, it falls within what would be normally expected.
So you're saying that we, so you're saying that we uh we're kind of compared to other cities, we're okay.
You exactly, you're exactly right, the same with business license and and development permitting permitting. You're basically right on track.
Because we we always get the, I mean, I'll make this super brief, guys. So we always get this whole comments from like some of these uh people who are trying to build something, either developers or. Or people who hire a contractor and. Oh my God, it takes, it takes twice as long and three times, I've never seen this in any other city and your city is, you know. You know, they 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 try to cry foul, you know what I'm saying, so.
That's, that's true, and I I I, from doing studies like this in other cities, sometimes it's just public perception. And it's not really grounded on metrics and sometimes when you drill down and and talk with the individual. You find out that they're including certain, you know, maybe the first time they contacted city. Verbally without any plans and included that timeframe within the overall time of getting a permit. Um but in this situation, I want to say though, it it was. Very pointed in the comments I received from the stakeholders. That the satisfaction of the service and expectations, they were met. Within the planning division or the planning community development department. Where we fell a little short was the applicants or customers' expectations once they got into plan check. Into the building and safety department. And there. The the customer service aspect, the time delays. Uh uh quite a few of the stakeholders mentioned to me their frustration. In getting their plans back on time. Um and that's based upon verbal assurances that their plans would be ready by a certain date. And it wouldn't be, and it would be another two weeks, and when that time comes around, there, it wouldn't be. Available, it was not ready, so there's be another two weeks. Now, and I think what happens though is. When customer service is impacted, it really starts to color their expectations and. Their grievances, their perception of the process. And I'm not saying that I'm, I I'm critical or or I do not believe. What I heard from the stakeholders, I do believe what I heard. And I do understand their frustration and one stakeholder in particular cited to me. As if he was reading from a logbook on different dates, this happened, this day happened, this, and he was recounting. His experiences on getting a set of plans back. So I think there is a a need to address customer service and we're gonna talk about that a little bit further, but. Yeah, and I I was uh listening to um Craig Cagle's presentation at the very beginning of the council meeting. About customer service. And so I think maybe it's just the the coming together of the of the stars that. We're talking about customer service in two different presentations tonight. But I think this is an area that should be strongly considered by the city. Um but this is mostly, what you see on the screen is the entitlement processing time for planning. It's not the uh building and safety plan check.
Okay.
And again, it's, I I don't have that for you, but again, it really depends upon the quality of the plan checks. I'm going by more the uh customer satisfaction and stakeholder comments.
Okay.
When it relates to the plan check process.
Yeah, and and then it'd be interesting just to know uh, figure out if there's a chronic problem. Or if it's a sporadic problem, so that's, that's what's of interest to me. Uh major uh mayor, Mayor Proton Valentine. Comment.
I just, I just have.
And then uh mon- um customer Montero and then councilwoman English.
Yes, I just have a quick question, um thank you, Mr. Wong, for your presentation. Um I just want to, um would you please explain again the difference between non-discretionary and discretionary?
Certainly, um no, let me start with discretionary, discretionary are. Projects and plans that require. Uh planning commission review, they're not. They're they're discretionary in that you have a public hearing process and these are things like uh variances. Uh if you need a variance or a conditional use permit, so these are things that can be denied, so they are discretionary. Uh non-discretionary are projects that are uh acceptable and do not require planning commission review. So long as they comply with your current code. Uh things like if you have a fence that you want to erect or you want to put on a um. A canopy in the backyard or you want to do some tenant improvements. Um these are things that would not require planning commission review and are considered to be then non-discretionary. And hence, they're much quicker and a lot of times in Hawthorne and comparable cities. They can be plant uh planned reviewed by the planning department the same day or the next day. Um but quite often, if there is a backlog within the staffing. Uh you know, workload, their intake, they're taken in to the department. And then planned reviewed and then submitted back to the applicant and it takes maybe a week or two weeks to do. The discretionary takes longer because of the the nature of the of the project.
Thank you.
Councilor Montero and then councilwoman English.
Thank you, Mr. Me, so uh thank you, Mr. Wong uh for so far for the presentation. I want to ask you the methodology that you use. Uh to come up with this uh one week or three weeks or four to eight weeks. Did the staff tell you those specific week or you have gone through. The plans and check that when they came in, when they were reviewed, when they were sent out, when they were approved. I want to find out how the methodology, how did you use?
Council member, uh excellent question, let me respond by saying that it was based upon staff uh meetings. And conversations, but cross-checked at different opportunity times. And uh at times with different individuals and. These are things that were discussed over several meetings with staff and. Re-iterated and re-questioned and kind of go through the process again. And with each, each, after each meeting with city staff or after a number of meetings, I would compile meeting notes. And send them to the staff members for their review and collab- and make sure that it's accurate. And.
But sir, how how you validate that staff comment or or telling you. We spent eight weeks on this or we spent one week on that, how you validate that?
It, it is true, I am relying upon the the candor and honesty of the staff. And I have no reason to doubt it, um based upon what I've experienced in other cities. And looking at what they respond and the comparable cities, I feel that is, it is accurate.
And uh so and this, just to keep me picky back, so non-dis- that this could. Discretionary is basically is the administrator approval, like county approval, right?
Ministerial, yes, yeah, ministerial approvals.
Yeah, uh so we haven't get to the building and safety, but did you actually. Find any backlog of of plan checks there that have was not done for many months?
I did not get into the specific plan checks, you know, individual plan checks. Again, I'm basing it upon my staff interviews and also stakeholder interviews. Of different projects that were submitted um through planning and building and safety.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Mayor, um you know, there's there's similar questions that I have, but. You're not fully completed with your presentation, correct?
That's right.
So there's more, more to go?
There's more to go, but we're we're near the end.
I I want to, I want to ultimately see the 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 complete um report before I I comment on some of the. The things that I I have done.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, go ahead, uh let's try to get through, I mean, I'm sorry, I started the questioning, so. Um if you can try to get through everything, so we can ask any final questions, sir.
Very good, let's, let's continue. So out of the course of this study, uh these are, I I wanted to. Kind of crystallize five challenges that face the city at the current time. Related to permitting. And top on the list is customer service. Um we touched upon that already, but this was something that was brought out. Um most definitely from my interviews with the fifteen stakeholders. And and these are people who are representative of of uh residential and commercial. Development projects, um they're the resident of Hawthorne, they're your mom and pop. They are also experienced people who do this as a living, contractors and architects and developers. So I wanted to be sure I touch upon the the spectrum of applicants that would be applying for permits in your city. Um but that was something that was very clear from talking with them. About the challenges that face the city currently. And I think the level of experience of an applicant. Is critical to acknowledge because. They're very unfamiliar with the process of getting a permit, they don't do this every day. Um it's a very um. Anxious time to to uh do a development project, whether it's a small uh remodel. Or a a large development, building a new house, but for the resident. Submitting such an application, it's, it's a very frustrating and. And worrisome and anxious time and that's when they need a lot of handholding and explanation. Um but equally so, for those who are experienced applicants, people who do this for a living. Uh they need assistance as well and good and effective communication. Communication, I I mentioned here, internal and external, is not just to the applicants. That are coming through the city, applying for permits and having effective communication with them. But also, I think internally among staff, that there needs to be greater discussion. Of the different processes and procedures that you have for a business license permit. Uh for a development permit uh process, uh there needs to be more understanding. There needs to be more understanding between departments so that we're not operating. In our own specialties in our silos. That we can reach over and understand how. Their work interacts with that department's work. So that they can see. The process from A to B to C to D and so forth. Policies and procedures, I thought was something that was missing. And, and this kind of points out, for example, in, in one department. You, you've had about four or five. Department heads within. The same number of years. And that changeover in, in top leadership for that department. It, it impacts the way that department can operate. And the policies and procedures that each of the department heads. Start to initiate. Because they see an area that needs to be addressed. But before they can really fully implement it. They depart from the city. So having some policies and procedures established. Somehow memorialized in a manual, I think that would be. A, a positive. For the overall operation of the department. Similarly. Quality control and supervision. That addresses, for example, just knowing where and how plans are being processed and checked. And how each individual is interpreting and applying the city's code. To those set of plans. That there should be more consistency. And in the application of the code itself.
All right, sir.
So. These are the recommendations that I hope that you will take away from this presentation, again, five. One, the first one I want to talk about is a one-stop permitting process, a center, it's like a one-stop. For all your development permitting needs. Certainly, and you, you hear about this in different cities, having a one-stop process. But basically it involves bringing together those departments that are interrelated on a development permit. And for that matter, a business license. Together in closer proximity to each other. Currently. Community development and building and safety are on the same floor. But physically. They're separated and they have two separate public counters. The license department that intake, you know, starts the licensing process. But they also intake payment of fees related to planning and building and safety. So. This concept here is to bring. Building and safety and planning certainly together in public works. But if at all possible to bring the function of licensing. Up to the same, to the same area, so that you have four departments. Within a one-stop center. It would be planning, building. Public works and licensing. Now. To do that, you. You're constrained by the actual physical layout. Of the office. And, and therefore a space allocation plan should be undertaken. To analyze the. The spatial needs of, of these four departments, if you were to have four departments. Kind of located in a. In a shared location, so that they would have a shared public counter. This would bring. The departments closer together, but then also it would increase the level of interaction. Because they're just literally going to have to rub shoulders with each other. And they're going to be able to communicate hopefully more interactively with each other. But. This also is a greater benefit to the applicant or your customer, because now they do not have to go. From one counter to another counter, to another counter, or go downstairs. Pay for the, pay for the plan or plan check or pay for the, the fee and then go up with the receipt. It could all be done in one location, so that the customer does not have to. Physically go anywhere else but one location. Now. If you're interested in bringing the license department, I'm actually just thinking just the one person from licensing. Could possibly relocate to this one stop area and not have to move the entire department because. That could be a, a constraint on the operation of that department itself, because it's within finance. But having a one-stop permitting center. Is one consideration. Customer service. And this kind of alludes to what we heard earlier in the city council meeting. About, you know, customer service over the phone, in person. And so forth, but using technology more efficiently, I think definitely can be. A benefit to the process, for example, just having emails, when we take in an application. To get the phone number, the mobile phone, the email of the applicants. Provide an easy way to, to communicate with that individual throughout the process. Even during building inspection, for example. Where they could be contacted as to where they are in the queue of inspections. So that they're not waiting all day for a building inspection. But. Customer service is very important and again. Having good customer service results in happier customers who then basically have fewer complaints and they're not looking for certain issues. I found that in past, no matter what city, if customer service is an issue, it starts to color their perspec- perception of city government. And it, it, it impacts it negatively.
Um, sir, could you go through the rest of the items a little bit more?
Let me do that, I'm sorry to dwell on that.
Only, only because we have a lot of other business we have to take care of, and this is important, we want to ask questions if anybody has it, go ahead.
Very good, staff meetings and department procedural manual. Staff meetings so that you have a greater sense of where your workload is and how it's being handled. Interchange of discussion among your staff to understand consistency and sharing of ideas. Procedural manual, this is a policy and procedural manual that would then establish in writing. Different policies and procedures that the department wants to initiate. To effectuate better service and, and processes. I did mention earlier about the backlog in business license. This is the old historic backlog that still is unresolved. Current, current operations, things are running smoothly. But this is a backlog for twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen time period. Where there seems to be a backlog of, we don't know the exact number. But people have said that it's in the hundreds of business license applications that have not been processed. And this is something that I feel is very important to address and develop a strategy. To resolve it. You know. Work on it bit by bit, but just got to get, you got to get through it to process that backlog. The last item here is a navigator position. And this kind of addresses the coordination of plans. Currently, the plans are submitted at two different locations, either. If it's a discretionary project, it goes to planning first, if it's a non-discretionary project, it goes to building and safety first. I'm recommending that, you know, it all starts in one location. Whether it be, and I'm recommending that they should start at planning. Since planning is always involved in the initial phases on, in both, in both types of projects. But a navigator position kind of fills that position very neatly. It's a new position that you do not have currently. But it's a staff position that into, that this person would. Would be the receiver or the intake of all plans, whether they're discretionary or non-discretionary. But all development plans would go through this one person. Who would then enter it into by then maybe the intergov system, the land management system. So that is entered into your permitting and project tracking system. And this person would be the point of contact for your customers. If they have any questions, they can contact this navigator. Who could then look it up on the intergov system to see what's the status and get back with the applicant in a very timely manner. But this is a new position that I think would be very helpful. In the overall processing of development permits. And so that's the. Conclusion of my presentation.
Sir, I'd like to just go ahead, first up, I want to thank you for your presentation and for your studies of our situation. We, we get the feedback from the business community. And so we, we, we try to assess ourselves as a city, you know, we might look at it things at a different perspective because we're here. But it's always good to have a, 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 a set, somebody from the outside, take a look at what, you know. Unbiely, you know, and. Take a quick look at what, what's going on here in the city and just give us like their opinion. So I, I really appreciate this, but. Von? Is this, I mean, I, I thought these suggestions were, were very, very beneficial. I mean, I'd just like for you just to take a look at what those recommendations were. See which ones of them we can easily apply and see what works for us. You, 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 you know that we have concerns, and so. I'd just like for you just to let us just casually know. Doesn't have to be a report, maybe, maybe you can come up with a presentation next time. From your, a discussion item from you, just to let us know. What you thought about this, we can have, yeah. Is that okay?
Yes, noted, thank you.
Councilman Montero?
Is Ms. English, is, is finished with her questions?
I, I, I did have one question, do you want me to go ahead, I, I have.
Yeah, go ahead, always, thank you.
So, Mr. Wong, thank you for, thank you for your report and, and for being with us here this evening. To report out on your findings, we appreciate that. I was just curious, sir, how were you able to identify the fifteen stakeholders that you had? Interactions with, with regards to their perceived, you know. Good, bad with the city staff?
Yes, yes, let me explain, I'm sorry I didn't explain that earlier. The fifteen stakeholders were, the names and contact information were provided by city staff. I asked them, give me a sample of people that are representative of all types of permits and all levels of expertise. I want to follow up with them and ask them candid questions about their experiences. So all fi- all fifteen names were provided by city staff in. And that's how I followed up with them.
Thank you, I would have definitely asked that you reach out to the council members. Because the council members can give you fifteen, twenty, fifty, a hundred, whatever you need. In the years of service that we've been here on the council, so. And, and we have to be impartial, right? We have to be impartial to provide a quantified number as to exactly who, what, where, when, right? But thank you for your time and well noted, and we are off and running with regards to our customer service campaign, again. Something that we've been working on since a while now, and so it, it just justifies what you said with regards to earlier's presentation, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Councilmember Montero?
I thank you, Mr. Man, I thank you, Mr. Wong for, for your presentation. And I have to commend you to identify those five top challenge. And also to give us five top recommendations, so I think. Those is going to help us out because we were trying to figure it out. How to restructure our city hall, especially planning, building and safety and the licensing, so. So you have gave us some feedback that I think we're going to pick you back on that. And like Mr. Mayor said, we're going to give Von a direct, a directive to come up with a plan of action. That he will present it to us, how can we begin to restructure? Especially planning, building and safety and licensing to be more efficient and to be more customer friendly and to be more. In tune with the reality, because like Ms. English said. I had probably fifty different developer could, could have gave you some specific details that, for example. Some of a, a, a Warner that wanted to open a little Chinese. Place for, for food. Eight months on waiting to, to be operational when he was paying rent for eight months, not getting a dime. The same thing happened with the, with the taco place, so I can go on and on and on, so. So, but I thank you for identifying these five top challenge and five top recommendation that is a beginning and we're going to implement something. Then the people of Hawthorne will be proud of us, so thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir, thank, thank you for your comments, Councilman Montero, thank you, thank you, Mr. Jack Wong, and we accept your presentation until the record, thank you.
All right, have a nice evening, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. General matters, another item, number nineteen, is a presentation on the telehealth van LLC. Councilmember Reyes English, go ahead, man.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, I want to introduce Telehealth Van, a very unique and innovative program. Offering service to those in need in around our mental health, homeless and low income communities. And so with that, I'm going to be brief and ask that Telehealth Van. Where are we at, Dion Rambo and Crystal Estevan should be on here, I want to do an intro for them, there's Dion Rambo. Dion, if you could just again briefly speak on Telehealth Van and, and the hopes of being exclusive here at Hawthorne.
Hi, name is Dion Rambo, can you guys hear me okay?
You're good, you're good.
Okay. But briefly, Dion Rambo, Rambo House is probably what I'm best known for in Los Angeles for the last twelve years. We do a lot of, if you have seen the, the presentation, we do a lot of things for, of course, everything from Eric Garcetti to all of the Board of Supervisors. And actually, almost every single fifteen districts around Los Angeles, we play a huge part. Mainly because we do a lot of community engagement, you know, we have our behavior health services and Sharps and. The county as, as regular monthly clients. But we've become popular because we're really good at. Kind of bridging the gap between what the dignitaries are trying to do. On a policy level or funding level to the community actually supporting it. And hence, this is why when it was time to do something like the telehealth van, it was just kind of a no-brainer to us, we weren't familiar with. Healthcare as much, so this was a no-brainer to us to try to reach the community. And we created one van and it immediately exploded to twenty vans and, and we've just hit our five thousandth visit. Was that enough, Angie?
Oh, no, you're great, go ahead, I, I just wanted what types of services you offer and the community that you're reaching.
Awesome, thank you, Councilwoman. Well, overall, I'll just dive into what telehealth then is, telehealth then is actually very unique, right now, we're the only ones doing it. Sharp, which is the second largest mental health organization in LA County, they're, they're funded from LA County. I've had them as a client for ten years, the CEO came to me, Dr. Barber and said, hey, we have all of these. Clients, we have thousands of clients and we have the therapists and doctors and they just can't reach, this was before we thought. This is when we thought COVID was just going to be a temporary thing. Hence, he couldn't figure out how to do it, there was no budget to figure out how to do it. And I just told Dr. Barber and the board members, let me just toy around with an idea. A Rambo House went and bought a van, converted it completely into wifi, completely. We're already familiar with the HIPAA compliance, we're already familiar with. How data needs to work and safety and security because of the clients that we've had. And we were able to just launch it. Fix things as we went and then up, just with Dr. Barber alone, one van turned to four. And patients were now, because the, the low income was now becoming homeless. The vans kind of met them wherever they were, so as they were transitioning with trying to figure out life. They kept their therapists, they kept their, their probation people, they kept their social workers and the van followed them until they got better. And that's what we've been known for right now, that's why we've been receiving the awards throughout the city. And we're entering into our second year with the telehealth event, just, just for clarity, although it's called a telehealth van. Currently, no one has to leave where they live. I think in twenty twenty, LASSA put out a report that it was sixty-six thousand homelessness. And that number is almost doubling now because the low income are becoming those without homes. So. The van goes to where they are, so if they're living in a mobile home or if they're at a tent, we work a lot in front of the Union Rescue Mission. And other places around the districts. So if they're living in a mobile home or if they're at a tent, we work a lot in front of the Union Rescue Mission and other places around the districts. Just going to where they are. They simply get in, they meet their scheduled therapists and doctors, and they get right back out again. This is why our retention rate has been over eighty percent. What we're doing with Hawthorne, I'm excited about because. This is like a new way to use the van. A- as we know, both of us being from just L.A. in general. And and of course, I I grew up in Hawthorne on Cerise, um before I even started at Ramble House. So I have a passion, personal passion for Hawthorne. Um but the vans will, we we're working on something now and and I'm excited to talk regularly with. Um the city manager there, Von, and everyone there about how the van could work by sitting. Where encapments are. So where those hard-to-reach areas are, where the kind of the homeless and the low income kind of roam into the communities. The vans would kind of meet them where they are. We're converting the vans now where they simply just turn towards the window. And they, it's almost like a voting machine where you walk up there with the pads to for the privacy. And you can talk to one of our operations resource persons here in our office, and they put them to the right resources to where they need to go. So if they're dealing with addiction, we can find a local place in Hawthorne to help them uh deal with addiction. If it's um, I I mean, obviously, across the board. Mental health is a is a huge one. We've been probably over seventy-five percent focused on uh mental health, which is what most of the homeless are asking for. Is ongoing mental health support in dealing with the new thoughts in their brain. So that's one of the things that we would point to, the the Sharps, who's our clients, the BAB Health Services, who's our client Hathaway and others, who are our regular clients. Uh that's why the Telehealth Van was created. We treated it just to park where people were. And to just kind of so they can continue with their treatments or find just where to sleep at night. And that's what the Telehealth Van is.
Thank you. Um I know that there was some uh brief discussion with regards to uh collaboration with uh the police. The our our police agency. Uh Chief Ishi, would you like to make some remarks or uh comments? On how you see this ultimately being a collaborative effort uh working together?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to uh to to uh come on here. We met a couple of weeks ago um and got a demo, saw the van. And, you know, frankly, I must say we were very uh. Excited and uh and just, we we just got such a positive feeling uh coming out of that meeting. One of the things that we have found through, you know, working on our community is the lack of op- lack of choices. That our officers come across um in very difficult situations. In a recent uh study that we did, we found that approximately forty percent of the people we come in contact have some sort of mental health. History or or connection um uh and they need help. And so having this as a a uh the vans out there, hearing the story of the driver and how you're employing uh uh folks. You know, that that um uh are come from the community and and having is very inspiring. And I hope that down the road, uh this will be a great opportunity for us to partner with you. And our officers that are out daily working uh in our community. In contact with people experiencing homelessness, that this will be a a a valuable. Resource for them. So I I was inspired by by uh uh Mr. Rambo and and taking initiative to do something. And and getting it out there. So thank you very much for the for this opportunity. We look forward to working uh with you if if approved.
Thank you, Chief. And and let me say that um I almost wanted to say Michael, because you told me to call you Mike. I'm so used to the first name now, because. Uh but anyway, um but thank you, Chief. I think that um one of the things that the chief and I was talking about specifically. In addition to what the uh Telehealth event can help do is, we really invest heavily. Because my background is public relations and marketing as well, we also invest in making sure the vans are always seen, which is key. Especially when the chief has his hands full. The, we spend time and uh um our income on. The vans always being seen throughout the community, because being from the community, um I have this old-school way of thinking that. Was when we grew up, the um the clinics were fine. Um and then no matter what the doctors were inside, you'd see them. But the clinics, you trusted the clinic, so you went inside and met the doctor. That's kind of my old-school theory of the Telehealth van. If I can keep the community comfortable with seeing people drive the vans who look like them. In their community, where they live. When it's time for the chief to, you know, implement a flyer or communicate something. He can use the Telehealth van to help as a partner and in uh translating that information to the residences. And hopefully, it can reduce the, the, you know, homelessness isn't going away right now. Um e- even no matter how much money LASSA's putting in and the county's putting in, the government's putting in. It's a huge problem that everyone's trying to. Telehealth Van is just really just here to help manage it, um help everyone who is willing to um see their therapist or see a mental health person. It's just to save as many people as we can. And luckily, Hawthorne is the first place that we're actually teaming with as a city. Media's gonna love it, because they've been chasing us nonstop. If you ever Googled Telehealth Van, you see us on the news. We have never really done other interviews other than Spectrum and some others. But everyone from L.A. Times, I was telling the councilwoman that, I said, oh my gosh, when we do this, especially because we have YG. Who was obviously a a local large rapper, a part of this, it's going to be a huge um media push towards a Hawthorne and and your efforts of doing this. So thank you again.
I I wanna, I want the opportunity for council members to also ask some questions, and I will give you uh Crystal uh an opportunity as well. But um I'll 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 leave it to you, Mayor, to give uh those who have questions.
Yeah, I would like to start off. Um and uh yeah, I liked, I saw the presentation. I saw a handout that was given to me. Read about it, asked some questions of my colleagues. And uh I'm really impressed uh with your 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 product. It is a product. It's a service product.
Yes.
And um of course, it's really cool that you know you're from Hawthorne. But at the same time, the idea has been effective in uh certain, like L.A. County, from what I understand. And we, as a city of municipality, we're we're gonna be like, maybe even the first municipality or second or something. To really implement this uh in in its community. And I don't, not for the health aspect of it necessarily, we're gonna be. I think we're gonna be trying to get some uh juice out of the mental health a- application for this. So uh and you know, like homelessness is a big thing, and I believe that Hawthorne is on the cutting edge of helping the homeless. In our, in the South Bay and in L.A. County. So I mean, this is a welcome addition. I'm willing to support this, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And uh let me add to that and just say that um when this happens. Um hopefully, this happens, but when this happens with you all, everyone was gonna follow everything that you do on how this implements. And it, and so I wanted to work just as much as you and your team. Um you, we also have UCLA's Research Department, who starts to follow us as of September. Who's gonna follow and track the data on this program, because this kind of, this is one of the first programs, like Cal Fund told us. This is one of the first programs that actually bridges the digital divide. So instead of forcing technology on the low-income and the homeless, this saying, listen, for right now, let's just make sure you can meet a doctor. And meet their uh mental health people. So UCLA.
And so at some point, we're gonna give you the parameters, the bounds, and then the measurables, so that we could, you know, make sure.
That's what they're asking for. They're hoping that they could work even directly with you and your team on the, any analytics and data. That you would like to collect as a city to make better decisions on this area. They're gonna give it to you. They also told, we had a meeting actually the last week with them about how to actually roll this out.
Cool, cool. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go to Councilmember Montero, Councilmember Patterson, and then Mayor Proten. Go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you, Mr. Rambo. For bringing us Telehealth. Thanks to uh Councilwoman English, uh because I know she is the one who speeding up this project. So uh I'm very uh excited about it, because uh like you said, you know, you grew up in Hawthorne. And uh and as you know, you know, we have Behavior Health Service uh has been our partners for many, many years. Uh because, you know, they have provided a lot of services to the city of Hawthorne, because like, you know, we don't have a health department. So we depend in a lot of partnerships. So, you know, Pacifica House basically is down the street in in El Segundo Boulevard. And then we have the parent, the women's shelter. And then, of course, the BHS headquarters is just down the street on Crenshaw.
Crenshaw, right.
Exactly, in 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 uh so, so we have a long history of that. And my my question to you is, it's fantastic idea to go where the where the unhoused people are. Especially, you know, the homeless, and then we we have a lot of low-income families in Hawthorne, and mental health is a big issue. So I wanted to find out, for example, if one of the homeless come to you, to your van, right? Um and they don't have no, no provider. So how do you connect that particular individual to service? And 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 give me a little bit of your process, how to uh follow up. Uh that continuing, continuing of care of that individual. Because like I said, you know, we have great institution in Hawthorne that I know you're gonna partner with them. Uh but give me a little bit of 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 how you follow that individual. You don't lose it somewhere in the cloud, right?
Right, right, right. Uh that's a great, that's a great question, because we're kind of embarking on this journey together. With people who, it's not just based on their Medi-Cal or Medicaid or not. We just, you know, going going in. I help, obviously, you know, BHS has been my client for the last eleven years. That means they, I'm paid every month as their communication and outreach. The clinics that you mentioned, I help open some of them. Everything from the signage to the communications, of course. Um so I sat with Shirley Summers, the CEO. When at, when he, when Henry brought me in before. Right, so we were a part of that. Um and and that's why there, it's so important. Would they have something that's called um FSP? Most, most county fund it has, and you can't turn away anyone. FSP is kind of the sweet spot that's going to enable this, let's say Lisa is the homeless. And she's walking up with mental health issues, or she's walking up with addiction issues. FSP allows us, because FSP is family service provider. Everyone, if you've never heard of FSP, it's a part of this program called Wraparound. Wraparound on multiple programs that is created. It's the most infect- uh effective uh mental health. Program that across the state. It's a program that instead of just one item, it's multiple items working together.
Like a really full system, right?
It's a full system. And so it's the most effective. That's where a lot of the probation's trying to lean towards Wraparound. Everyone's leaning toward, well, with FSP, it's the sweet spot on, if someone walks through your door, you can't tell them no. So um with the, with the Telehealth van and now with virtual meetings counting for their county dollars. Which means their FSP is funded, be it if it's Sharp, Southern California Health and Rehabilitation, or BHS. Because they're already funded, they already have the staff, we're gonna utilize those resources. We're going to say, we just opened up a BHS, just open the clinic for you guys on El Segundo in Hawthorne. We just um took over one of the locations there. Do, we're going to be able to print out where they should go. Until transportation, we figure out the transportation component, we're going to be able to point them to the the local recovery. LASSA's const- LASSA is even constantly updating where available beds are in their website. This van now can tell them where to go. So if they're even running from their abuser. Look at this van as kind of a nine-one-one place that they can go to. So and and that's that the heart that the city of Hawthorne is giving to the residences to kind of help manage things. And we're gonna collect the data. We're gonna, you know, collect the data, the names, the information, and give it over to you so you can fine-tune your own system.
Yeah, uh it's interesting, because you know, I have a background in public health. So I used to work for the Federal Qualified Health Center. So I know exactly what you're talking about. So it's great to see, because health was one of my priorities in my life. To make sure that every single family and children receive healthcare. So thank you, and then my hat goes up to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, uh real quickly, um so thank you, sir. Um we're gonna add, we have two more comments. Um but we'd like to move the, move it along more quickly, a little bit more quickly. Um so interim city attorney, you have some co- a comment?
Um I I also wanna make contact with Mr. Rambo. Um the city attorney's office have a misdemeanor prosecution unit. And I've been looking forward to finding sources such as yours to work out a plan for pre-filing diversion program. For misdemeanor cases. So I would like to be in contact with you uh offline and further discuss what we can implement.
I appreciate that. We met with the bureau chief for um of the Department of Probation. About how to utilize the vans to become more of a probation support for you. Especially when it comes to either everything from meeting with their parole officers to et cetera, just to kind of meet them where they were. So they didn't fall into um those categories. Um so thank you. I'd love to talk to you about it.
This is, that that's awesome. That's really good. That's uh good that you came up with that. Uh interim city attorney, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilmember Patterson, and then Mayor Proten.
Uh thanks a lot. Real quick, um just wanna clarify, the service isn't just for the homeless. Is that, that's correct, right?
That's correct.
But it's targeted towards low, low-income individuals, whether they're housed or unhoused. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so let's say you have somebody in our city who's a low-income individual. And I understand that, like, in our, in our elementary schools, maybe like eighty percent of our children qualify for free lunch or something like that. Uh so I think it's a, it's a large, it's a good percentage of our population. I think I noticed you said that a large percentage of those that use your services are under twenty. Um so I find that, found that interesting. But let's say we have, you know, Lisa who who uh is housed, low-income. Um and needs the services. Yeah, she would have the ability to set an appointment if you'd come to her home. And she can come out, out, out front, I guess, and.
Well, well, right now, uh two, well, two uh points. One, the reason a majority of the percentage were younger was because that's how Sharp was using it. They had their children's department. Um and so the children and the parents would get into the vans to see them. That's one of the reasons why the numbers were a little bit younger. But we dealt with a lot of vets and a lot of the older ones. But when it came to the youth, they would come in robes at a time, because one parent would have four um in the inner city. Um but speaking on your other point, um you don't have to be low-income or homeless per se. That's why they were, this program was created. To reach them. But if someone simply parked, if if we were parked next to, you know, Superior Market. Um which we we kind of do right now in Hawthorne. If someone was simply parked and walked up to the van and needed help on where to go. Right? Or uh, you know, they were having mental health issues, or their kids were having suicidal thoughts what to do. The vans will point them to the lo- current location or the closest location that could help them. In regards to the third tier, in regards to booking the van, that would be a your call. Right now, we're your clients. The Telehealth van would be your client. So if we put something in place, that could do exactly what we've been doing for the last year. Councilmember, which is, let's schedule the van, and the van would go to that person. Uh if you wanted to create a system, which we could do, where people can sign up for a representative or us to schedule them with it. It might be as easy as just um maybe working with um uh Ms. Summers' teams at at BHS. Uh which is what we do now. With someone wa- if someone sees the vans in the community. Our drivers have been inundated with people coming up saying, my mom can't leave the house. How do we take her somewhere? So we've been getting that. Not, we had to create postcards just to tell them, talk to your agency, talk to your agency. We get that big time even on social media. How do, how can you come help us? Our goal right now, for the lowest-hanging fruit, as you can imagine, I'm very patient and and strategic. I'm very careful as well. We're getting, we're giving the list to BHS, and we're having BHS staff call them, the little bit more, um they're a little bit more experienced. At seeing where they are specifically, if they have Medi-Cal or Medicaid, et cetera, um to source it out. If that's something we're going to do in the future with Hawthorne, let's talk about that. That's what we've been doing for the last year, so that's easy for us to do. But how it's going to work with the city, I'm sure would be a little bit different than how BHS and Sharp using it currently.
Also, so help me understand the process. Somebody finds your van and comes to you and say, that I've not been able to meet with my mental health provider. Um I need to talk to somebody about how I'm feeling or about uh updating my medication. Would they be gonna use your service to speak with a professional, or would you just?
No, they, they would. The the cool thing about the Telehealth van is, we actually have staff here at my office at Telehealth then in in Westchester. Who would immediately take the call. Let me walk you through it quickly in in sixty seconds. When the van is sitting there on El Segundo and Hawthorne Boulevard, um Lisa's stranded. She walks up to the van and she's having suicidal thoughts. When she walks up to the van, our, we call them community relations operators. We call them community relations operators. I'm sorry, community resource operators. So these are operators who know Hawthorne. They know their services available. They know the local clinics and the agencies. When Lisa walks up, our representative pops on the screen. Lisa says, I'm having suicidal thoughts or mental health thoughts or probation thoughts. We connect them immediately to someone else, virtual. So they're talking to them directly, their council member. We're not solving the problem for them. We're simply finding the people who are paid and qualified to give them some ideas of what to do. Now, from a. Now, from a legal standpoint, that's not where they're having their private discussions. That's just making sure they're safe. That's just making sure, hey, come into my office, we're gonna get this done and we're gonna print out where to go. If it's BHS on El Segundo, this is a printout. Take this with you, Lisa. The physical printout. All the vans have printers. Here's a physical printout. Just walk two blocks, Lisa, and um Stephanie over there is ready, waiting for you to take care of you. So the van is acting as kind of a, like I said, an operational pointing machine of the closest resources. Until we adopt transportation, right now, the van just says, just don't do anything right now. Let's get you to a person who can help you. Um, if you have no place to sleep or you're running from an abuser, just stay here for right now. We're gonna find the the best resource to help you. Did that, did that answer your question, councilman?
Not, not, not fully, because when I hear telehealth, I I hear being able to connect directly with your mental health professional. Uh, to have a session.
Right.
Electronically.
Well, well, telehealth by definition simply just means uh meeting with someone virtually. Um, telehealth in terms of how doctors are using it is really just, you're already a client, so we're using telehealth. And that's how they get their reimbursement. So telehealth is really just a word that means you're using digital to communicate. Um, in terms of them having their own doctors, we can come up, like I said, with a system with that. Right now, I'll give you an example with Sharp. When Sharp sends us to people's homes, we don't know their first name. We know their first names or to make sure they come out, but from a compliance standpoint and HIPAA standpoint, we don't have all of their specific information. Our goal is to just really make sure they meet with their provider, which is the Sharp therapist person. If this is something, council member, that we're re- returning it into, when Lisa walks up, she's saying, I think I have medical or Medicaid. We could turn this into a system where our operators are looking up the name to see if they have medical or Medicaid. We could turn that into a system. But right now, where our contract is based on is just to make sure we're acting as a resource unit. Making sure that we're pointing them to local Hawthorne locations or or outside of Hawthorne that can deal with their current issue. But that is a really good idea to do. Maybe we can add that in, you know, uh, maybe we can add that in. But right now, we're just dealing with pointing them to the local resource to make sure they're.
Like a connector.
Yes, we're we're simply a connector. And and you know, to be honest with you, I've been told from all of my friends who's trying to get me to make a lot of money. You know, you could build medical, you know, you could build Medicaid. We get it all the time. But I love my city and my number one goal is to just make sure everyone is safe. We'll maybe deal with those things later on down the line, but. We, we just really want to make sure we're using the technology for the lowest hanging fruit of making sure everyone's safe right now.
Eventually, that's where you're gonna survive.
I know, I know.
Alright folks, uh, we have one more comment, but we really, really need to move along to the rest of the meeting.
I, I'll make some final remarks. The council member Valentine, yes.
Yeah, you got a quick question, uh, Mayor Proton?
Well, I, I really wanted to find out along with that same line of thinking. What do you do to um to interact with the homeless? How do you find them and what do you do for them?
Uh, we find them by the encampments. That's been largely the easiest way so far where we're parking near encampments. If you look at the presentation, one of the pages in, you can see us parked at encampments, be it if it's um. Um, a, a lot of things, obviously, in the Skid Row area. We've done a lot of things all up and down, um, Vernon and things like that. We're simply parking at encampments where the homeless can walk up and get used to it being kind of a resource, kind of a reception desk for resources. Most of them don't use their phones, Mayor Proton, because they don't have data, they don't have electricity, so they're dying where they are. So the van offers as kind of just a place that they can walk up to. That's how we've been meeting with the homeless where they are.
And what do you do for them?
Um, we find the local, well, currently, they already have their therapists and doctors. So we've been lucky, Sharp, for example, the people who are, we've had homeless who pull up with their baskets. They leave their baskets by the van, they sit in to meet their therapist, because a lot of them to get their meds, continue to get their meds. They have to continue to meet their therapist. The therapist still somehow still talks to them, but they can't FaceTime them. They can't do Zoom with them. So currently with Sharp, Sharp has been able to already have several hundreds of them who are already homeless or low income, who just can't meet with them. So what we've been doing for the last year and why we fit the numbers of five thousand was, those were physical visits. Those were physical visits where people got into the van once a week. You know, the meeting their same therapist to make sure they got off the streets or make sure that they um got their medications. That's what we've been doing for the last year. Mayor Proton, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna park, we're gonna make sure they find the local resources, be it if it's a bed. Be it if it's suicidal thoughts. That's what we're planning to do with you as a pilot to test this out with. Giving them the local resource to make sure that they're okay uh at uh during that time.
And how will you determine success? You know, if you, if you, if you're, if you're dealing with a homeless person and a ho- homeless individual. What would, what would you be your determinative fa- determinative factor as to whether you've had success?
I think that would be a cross between UCLA helping us, your office, we coming up with guy guidelines. And and to tell us what would be counted as success. To me, personally, as just Rambo, um. Success has kind of been creating its own world because this has never been done before. So if we help five people actually get off the street or take, you know, relu- reduce suicidal thoughts, it's five people who would have been helped. Without the vans, because there is no one else bridging that divide right now. So we've increased things by, like I said, over eighty percent of retention. So BHS and Sharp is a good example. These are large organizations that can't even meet their current families because no one's going. So the vans has offered that. We also give twenty-five dollar Ralph's gift cards out for every five visits. So that's one of the things that we do, that we pay for, that we give. Um, and hence, everyone continues, our, our numbers got higher. So success to us, sorry, uh, sorry, mayor. Success to us is just a, how can we increase the numbers when we have, this is why our operators never leave the screen. When Lisa walks up to the van, that operator never leaves the screen until we can help Lisa as much as possible, get the resource that she needs.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Reyes English, uh, you wanna close out?
Just, I'm just gonna close it out real quick. I'm sorry, Crystal, just because we have a lot of other items on the agenda and it's already going on a late hour. Uh, let me just mention, council members, mayor, uh, the opportunities that we have here before us to address the homeless and health. Needs of those that are most in need, uh, low income, et cetera. We're gonna critique this program to fit. Hawthorne, exclusive. We're not competing with other agencies such as PATH, Lhasa, and those other organizations that make it difficult. Because they're reaching other constituents in other districts, especially in the Los Angeles area. This is exclusive to Hawthorne. It's two vans, five days a week. The police is gonna work with them. Our city uh departments are gonna work with them. We're gonna work with them because we get the calls from the constituents. We get the calls from those that need help. So in our time of of leadership, we discussed what was priority for us and all of us across the board said homeless. So having said that, I want to assure that this is a good program. I know that they met with the city manager. I know they met with the chief of police along with a few other police officers. And there's no other like it. And so I think by Hawthorne taking the lead on this. And assuring that we're moving forward to address the most need here in Hawthorne. Where folks might think otherwise and think that it's not happening, it's happening. We have homeless encampments, we have mental health. We have individuals that are hungry and are looking for food. So whatever we could do to critique this program to our fitting and our liking, you're the leaders that is gonna make this happen. So with that, I'm gonna move, um.
Oh, well, yeah, oh, yeah, um, I like to, just a moment, just a moment. Uh, I'm going to. Definitely want Ms. Esteban to introduce herself, get, get a brief minute to introduce herself, but go ahead with the uh, we're, miss. Let's phase into the next part. Mr. Interim City Manager, the agenda reflects that you have items twenty-one, twenty-three on the city manager's consent calendar. Can you please uh start off with item number twenty-one, which is this specific item?
City ma- uh, mayor, real quick, not to interfere with what you're trying to do. I do wanna look at item twenty-three, so we could pull that for discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm just going one by one. So item twenty-one. But and once we make the motion, I'll just give the opportunity to Miss Crystal Esteban to introduce herself.
Okay, thank you.
If I may interject, let me allow me to read the items. Each item will require.
Item number twenty-one, I'm asking for item twenty-one.
Uh, as they are all agreements. So item number twenty-one is an agreement between the city of Hawthorne. And Telehealth Van LLC for providing daily virtual telehealth resources and family support to low income and homeless residents in the city. Staff recommends that the city council approve the agreement with Telehealth Van LLC to provide such services for low income and homeless. Individuals with their social support. Get a motion in a second.
Yeah, go ahead, the motion in a second.
I make the motion.
And I second.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mrs. Esteban, uh, please introduce yourself, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may, we need to do a roll call. It is a vote.
Yes, but I'm, I'm going to do, we're all gonna vote, but I'm going to interject with the comments. It, it's, it's still gonna go, it's still gonna go to the uh, it's still gonna go for the vote.
Crystal to make a few remarks, thank you.
Yeah, Crystal, go ahead.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is. Dan. I am part of the telehealth van team along with Mr. Rambo. I just wanted to just introduce myself, so. You guys can go ahead and proceed.
What are you responsible for the project? What is your responsibility?
Oh, I do all the hiring. I do the dispatching. I do the scheduling for the drivers. So when the um agencies do book the telehealth van, I uh create the schedules for all the drivers. And I do all the payroll.
Okay.
So I do all the dispatching.
Administrative stuff.
All the administrative stuff, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here with Mr. Rambo. Uh, go ahead, go ahead, Miss City Clerk.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. Uh, if I can get Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, members, and congratulations to you.
A great idea, great idea. Thank you, Councilmember English.
No, thank you, thank you to the leadership here, the members. You see, you see the light at the end of the tunnel, what we're ultimately trying to do.
Yeah, this is a good idea. Let's see how, uh, let's.
It's gonna be a lot of people watching you. I, I don't know if I can still talk or not. I don't know the rules. I don't know the rules.
Let me just say the chief, he, our city attorney, city manager, and obviously the, the leadership here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Diane, uh, the Rambo.
Item twenty-two?
Thank you. Item twenty-two is an emergency housing voucher, E H V. It's a memorandum of understanding or MOU. With the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, L A H S A. It is recommended that the city council review and approve the attached MOU, direct the housing director or its designate to sign the filed document. Where applicable, and three, authorize a housing director or designate to make appropriate and necessary changes. With program guidelines, sign and file all future versions of the document.
Motion. I make a motion.
I second.
Roll call vote, please. And the reason we separated it was because item twenty-three was, uh, there was a discussion, so that's the only reason. Uh, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Montero, I'm talking to myself.
You had it, I'm muted, huh?
Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Proton Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Awesome. Item twenty-three, was there a comment?
Yes, uh, mayor, thank you. I wanted to pull that item for discussion. I want to ultimately ask, uh, city manager, Mr. Norris. Uh, the housing department report receiving file, what exactly are we doing? But more importantly, I, I wanna see what we're doing. Is there something you could present us?
Yes, uh, good evening. Uh, great things are going on. If you look at uh item twenty-three, it shows that. Uh, we have received abundance of applications for the emergency rental assistance program. Uh, and tonight, we, uh, I want Chris Palmer, Mr. Chris Palmer, to uh describe what we're doing as far as the commercial facade. Uh, rehabilitation program. And with that, I would like direction from council, uh, how to move forward with that item. If there's any housing questions that need to be answered, we do have housing staff uh attending the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer, the floor is yours.
Uh, we're gonna have a start with Denise to introduce the uh, the housing portion and then I'll follow her up with the uh rehab.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's try to keep this as concise as we, as possible, just so we can move forward.
Uh, yes, we'll do. Um, mayor, mayor Proton, council members, colleagues and guests, um, thank you for allowing me to present our.
Ma'am, you're dropping out a little bit, so let's just. Uh, we have a microphone you need to speak into. Uh, you were dropping out a little bit.
Okay, I apologize. Um, okay, so to start off, the housing department continues to administer the emergency rental assistance grant program for Hawthorne residents. Uh, we'd like to emphasize that the program is entirely separate from and in no way tied to the state's or county's eviction moratorium. Um, the emergency rental assistance grant program is open and will remain so until the allocated funds are exhausted or repurposed by the city council. As of July sixteenth, of the four hundred and five applications received, the city has assisted ninety-one individuals and families, which equates to about. Two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars of assistance paid directly to owners. Um, for those unfamiliar with the program, um, the emergency rental assistance grant program offers rental assistance of up to one thousand dollars a month for up to six months. And approximately one point four million dollars is available for use towards this program as a combination of about two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars in C D B G funds. And one point one million dollars in home funds. Um, the program continues to face challenges uh with regards to data collection, staffing. And competition from similar programs that offer comparatively more financial assistance. But uh to further exasperate difficulties, um, our office has seen an influx of phone calls uh for status checks. Due to the stress and frustration that tenants and owners have expressed with the ever-changing expiration dates of the eviction moratorium. Um, and as much as the emergency rental assistance grant program is a great resource for our qualifying residents, um, with the amount of debt that has. Uh, some have accrued and the limited maximum payment the city can offer per family, it would be beneficial for Hawthorne residents to all. Also consider applying for the state's housing is key rental assistance program. Uh, the objective is to make uh tenants and residents whole while reducing the time it will take them to recover from the pandemic. Uh, the housing department will be collaborating with the Fair Housing Foundation Rent Relief Team uh to bring to the city a workshop highlighting both programs. And where applications will be accepted there. Uh, the date for the workshop is to be determined in August. As for the E B A program, the emergency business assistance program assisting small businesses and micro enterprises was approved by the city council on April twenty-seventh. Uh, micro enterprises may be eligible to receive a grant of up to ten thousand dollars and qualified small businesses may receive a grant of up to uh twenty-five thousand dollars. The program funding availability totals three hundred eighty thousand dollars and applications will be accepted on a first come, first served basis. Um, request for staffing for this project was made in March and has yet to be provided. Uh, the program will launch when there is staff in place to administer it. Um, regarding the E H V program, uh, May twenty-fifth, the staff introduced emergency housing vouchers to the city council. Through award notification from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, um, at which time the city council approved and accepted sixty-six vouchers. On June twenty-second, the city council acknowledged and approved the final award of sixty-seven vouchers and uh receipt of head funding to administer the program. Um, as a reminder, it should be emphasized that these vouchers are very restrictive. Um, and they were created to assist individuals and families who are specifically homeless, at risk of homelessness. Fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking or human trafficking, or who are recently homeless. Um, the first major requirement and deadline is execution of the memorandum of understanding with the locally approved continuum of care provider, Lhasa. Um, that M O U came before you tonight, um, the item before this as a separate, um, a separate agenda item. And that is due by July thirty-first. Um, at this time, I'd like to pass the mic to my colleague in the planning department, uh, Chris Palmer, who will be presenting on our commercial rehabilitation program.
Uh, to the chat before we go to Chris.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, uh, thank you for the, for the update. Um, I just wanna hear a little bit. Uh, you mentioned about um, some tenants in some had a much bigger debt. Than the six thousand, correct?
Correct.
Uh, is there, on the language that we pass, to be able, maybe we could. Help these families receive more than the, the, the one thousand dollar per month or the six thousand limit? Uh, because if we don't see this number increase, right, because we only have helped ninety-one. Uh, individuals or families. So if we don't see that man, that number increase of, of the applicant. Can we as a city council go back and revisit the possibility to, to pay more? To the people that is still in debt with the, with the, with the landlords?
I think that's a great question. I think we would need to refer to the high regulations on that to make sure that we would be able to increase that amount.
Okay, so, yeah, so that's something that probably Vaughn, that maybe can ask him later on, Kimberly, to check with, with the. With HUD, if we can go back and see if possibility that we could increase that uh, that funding limit. Thank you.
Uh, um, that's a good question, uh, Councilwoman Montero. Um, I've always wondered that to myself because it seems like they. They, instead of using our uh benefit that we have been given through the federal government. They, instead of using our uh benefit that we have been given through the federal government, they're jumping up to the state's help. And it's like, you know, what's the point, you know? That's why I was frustrated in the beginning, thinking, oh, our department's not really. Passing, you know, processing these things. No, it's because people are just foregoing our assistance for some of this other assistance. And that's why the decline of some of the numbers with applications, so. Um, I I think it's a good question. I'm sus- I'm suspecting there's probably the limits set by the government, so.
Yeah, and.
Or else we would have known already.
Yeah, and the thing is like they cannot double dipping, right? So they cannot say got it from Hawthorne and go get from L A County, go get from the state.
But I mean, I wonder why not? Because it's a different pot of money, why not?
But it's coming from the federal government.
Oh, I guess. Yeah, yeah, I guess. I guess you're right. You're right, Vaughn.
Uh, I have, I have a question, ma'am. May I ask my question now?
Yeah, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Proton Valentine and Councilmember English, let's uh, let's get through this real quick.
Yeah, the the emergency business program and my un- is my understanding correct that it has, you haven't implemented it yet?
Um, we are waiting for staff, so I believe that they have just put out, or they're beginning to put out the um, the. So the hero, Human Resources Department is trying.
I'm, I can't hear you.
Okay, we're dropping out, miss.
Um, sorry, the Human Resources Department, I believe, needs to put out the um, appi- um, accept applications for that position. And I don't believe it's been opened yet. So until that's opened, we won't be able to do it.
Yeah, this is a very important program. Our businesses are really suffering. And um, and we approved this in April. And um, I I really would like to see this money go out to the small businesses who really need it.
Absolutely.
What, what, what staffing do you need in order to implement it?
So right now, we are ready, very short-staffed, so I believe at least, I I'm not sure exactly how many bodies that we are looking to hire. But I definitely, um, the current staffing we have now is not able to.
I can answer that for you, Councilmember Valentine. Uh, we have four postings that will go up for uh posting uh April, excuse me, August third. For positions in the Housing Department.
Okay.
I have, I have a question, but I'll wait till.
So is this, is, is this something that you can prioritize once you have the staffing? Because I would like to see this prioritized. Um. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember, uh, English?
Uh, yes, um, I will suggest, and Vaughn, I want you to work on this. Um, we know that we're understaffed, and that's just not your department. There's departments across the board. But we have funding, we have money, and the reason some of these folks have gone to the state and other places is because we're not getting the message out. Uh, reach, the the reach with regards to what we have available, uh, enough. So we need to work on a campaign to let folks know what dollars are available to residents here in Hawthorne, including those businesses and microbusinesses. I know uh, Councilmember Patterson was very adamant about the microbusinesses especially. And so let's start the application process. Let's get the word out. Let's get those applications in. And then we could deal with the staffing issues later. Now, I don't, I don't want to assume that, you know, these applications are gonna be, you know, accepted, and then we're gonna sit on them in a sense. Because there's, there's, there's multitasking that needs to take place, and there needs to be an effort. So having said that, I want to start accepting applications because I want people to know that we've got money available. And with regards to Councilmember Montero's resp- uh, response with regards to how much money can we give to residents that are still needing rental assistance? And have fallen behind more than the six thousand, I believe there were, there's a will, there's a way. So we have to use these monies and have them used to exhaust, to exhaust those funds. So let's press on those two issues. Those are priorities for us. Vaughn, City Attorney, uh, and Housing Department, uh, that's a priority for us. Uh, I, 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 I don't want to wait until we hire folks to uh process the thing, so let's, let's just get going with this, okay?
And I do apologize. The job posting will close on August third, so the jobs are posted. Uh, so after August third, we'll review the applications and get staff hired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, interim city attorney, before we go, we need to go to Mr. Palmer. Uh, Mr. Interim City Attorney, if if these positions start or to. These three or four positions are to offload work that our Housing Department can't handle at the moment. I'd, I would like to see these as being temporary. I don't know what you've done so far, but uh, we have money coming from the government to be able to, to pay for certain things. But if it's to meet a specific need, there's no need to hire permanent employees and start getting them on our rolls. They could benefit from a job. Uh, over these next year or maybe even two, but there's no need to put anybody else on the payroll, I would believe, you know. And then incur all these other things that we need to, so if you've, I would like for you to reconsider if that's not the way you've done it. But if you could take a look at that, that would be great. Just let me know how, uh, on the side.
What about if it, uh, instead of a temporary, what about if if we would find a consultant that would review all the application?
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Consultant, you know, fee for service.
Actually, that's a good suggestion. Uh, Mr. Interim City Manager, can you take uh my feedback and uh, Councilmember Monteros? And then just come back and find a solution? We just don't wanna incur additional people on the books. But people get to work and get the benefit of a job at the same time.
Yeah, and 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 Vaughn, you have the the discussions see about uh hiring anybody that is less than fifteen thousand, right?
Yes, I do.
Yeah?
Twenty-five, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so use that.
Isn't, isn't it true that housing is self, self-funded anyway?
Yes.
So what does it matter?
Well, we're gonna hire the staff, but I'm saying if we don't, if we want more expedite this process. We can bring a temporary consultant firm that could, could receive those evaluations that they would, that the application that the people's gonna apply. And then they will recommend who's gonna be, uh, you know, provide the funding, who's gonna get the funding. Until we hire the permanent staff.
We could simply make an evaluation of the Housing Department and staff currently, what they're doing. So let's start in-house first. Let's see what these folks are doing down there, and let's get these applications processed.
I, I actually agree more with Councilwoman Ray's English. I mean, I don't see why, it it can't be an all-hands-on-deck operation down there. I mean, I know you're trying to offload. I mean, we got people that have been promoted from, from managers to directors. And you got other people that have been added on. I think we need an all-hands-on-deck situation over there, so just, just let us know off the, uh, at some point. Uh, just consider our, what our feedback has been right now.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Uh, Chris, uh, Mr. Christopher Palmer, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Um, but on March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, the city council approved. Uh, the annual action plan, and part of that was funding for the commercial rehab program. So the proposed commercial rehab program will identify and target local businesses fronting major thoroughfares. And economically disadvantaged uh portions of the city. Um, we'll be looking for properties that are in disrepair, have ongoing code violations. Uh, or simply do not have the resources and expertise to perform uh facade improvements on their own. Um, essential outcomes of the program is to facilitate commercial reba- revitalization, stimulate private investment. Preserve and beautify the city's commercial corridors and generate shopping, dining and a pleasant walking environment. And the budget for this, uh, the city council already approved, uh, one million two hundred ninety-one thousand, uh, ninety-three dollars to administer and issue grants. Uh, for eligible participants. And uh, we'll be partnering with L D M and Associates uh to uh bring the project to life. Uh, one of the major focuses of the program will be uh quality design. Uh, eligible participants will utilize the services of contracted architects that'll be funded through the program. And uh, the policy from the program uh will mandate that design review and approval through the planning commission. And community input will be a priority through the public noticing and the public hearing process. Um, a successful implementation of the program, we anticipate an increase in sales immediately after. Uh, the improvements are made, sales improvements that are sustained for several years, increases in local uh tax revenues. Improvements to other businesses and storefronts, and attraction of new businesses uh and shoppers to Hawthorne Boulevard. We also anticipate that uh program participants will be motivated to make additional improvements. Uh, such as interior spaces or uh product line improvements. And the ultimate thing, uh, the ultimate reason for this is uh the economic recovery from the devastation of COVID nineteen. And uh, successful implementation Hawthorne will be distinguished from our other cities through architectural excellence. Interesting and inviting storefronts and simply are good neighbors. Uh, whether you come to the city from the north, south, east or west to conduct business, grab a bite to eat, shop, gather with friends. Uh, Hawthorne will be an attractive, active and engaging experience in the heart of the South Bay. And the number one thing, there's no fiscal impact. So this concludes my report, and we're available for any questions.
I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
You're welcome.
Uh, go ahead. Uh, okay, Mayor Proton Valentine, English, and then uh.
With Montero first.
You want him to go first? All right, okay. All right, go ahead.
I was first anyway.
You were? Okay. Ah, yeah, yeah, okay. Mayor Proton Valentine, go ahead.
So am I first or uh, or am I going?
You're, you're good, you're good, yeah.
Oh, God, okay, fine. All right, so um, the city approved a million two hundred ninety-one thousand ninety-three dollars. How much of that is going to go to L D M Associates?
Um, I'm not sure the exact percentage, but uh, their fee comes out, we already have a contract with them. So this one point, uh, two million is for the entirety of the commercial rehab program. Um, you already approved a, a count, um, a contract with them for services. This is part of the services rendered.
All right, so, so the, so the, the amount that we're paying them is not part of the one million two ninety-one thousand, is that right?
Correct.
How much is, how much are we paying them? Do you know?
I don't know what that contract was.
Okay, um, and so wh- uh, what is their timetable? When is this going to start?
We can start now. Uh, we actually have a plan. Uh, we're actively engaging uh businesses. We're taking a look at uh businesses along the entry points. Uh, they'll have a big impact, and then we're looking at businesses along Hawthorne Boulevard. Uh, there's rules to um, the businesses that can uh qualify. And so um, uh, what you have in your packet is a, a map. Uh, it's a disadvantaged map, a disadvantaged um areas map. And that'll be updated with the, the new data from the census. But basically, um, if it's in a certain census tract and it qualifies, that business qualifies because of where it's located and the community that it serves.
So how long are we talking about before we can begin, before this, the, the program can be implemented?
The program is implemented now. Yeah, you hired the consulting team um last council meeting. And uh, we're actively looking at businesses to start the outreach process.
All right, and so can you give me a timetable as to when it will start and when it will, when it will be completed?
It's an ongoing thing for the year. Uh, it started now, and as we get people to buy in. We'll be presenting those um businesses to the council uh as part of the process. Uh, it's, it's a very engaged process. Uh, what'll happen is uh we'll identify um a business. Uh, we'll see that they wanna participate, we'll engage the architects, we'll have a meeting that encompasses planning, building. The, the normal development meeting that we have to get the buy-in, uh, get any feedback that we will have. And um, we will present it uh to the council for approval. If the council um approves it, we'll, we'll take it to the process and we'll start the, we'll, we'll, we'll start the construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, so I'm next.
Yes.
Uh, thanks, uh, Mr. Palmer. So uh, so I wanna understand, because the, uh, this was one of my uh intention. Is to have the teams of design, architects, you know, in-house per se. That they were going to be doing all the renovations when we identified the business, when they agree and sign on that line, okay, I wanna participate. Because I want, I want those facades to be almost uh uniform, something that's gonna be beautiful. So it's not gonna be a different facade, different, different, different types, right? Uh, is my understanding is correct, so, so the, the architect is gonna be like, uh, it's gonna be the one that's gonna be designing all the, the facade. Basis on, on our guidelines?
There's two parts to that, because um, if you participate in the program, you're able to get your own contracting team. We'll have to go through the bidding process. Uh, but um, we anticipate having a consultant architect in-house on staff, like you're referring to. And to get the uniformity that you're referring to, that has more to do with our municipal code and our design guidelines. So as, as long as we, you know, are adhering to our design guidelines and even enhancing them if need be. Uh, we'll get the uniform uh quality that you're looking for.
Because, because what I'm thinking about it, because if, 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 if the business apply, and then if they have to go find their own architect. The design is, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna want money upfront, because they don't have the money to put, to pay the architect to design the plan. So that's what I was trying to avoid, all these hoop ups that the business have to go and find the architect. Architect have to get paid to design the facade, and then have to come to the, to the planning department, and the planning department had to review. And then they got to go to the planning commission. So I don't want that process. I, I, I want to simplify this process. I wanted to see if, if we could find the, 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 the business and say, look, this is what we have in mind. Are you, are you in favor? So we would have whatever designed by our architects. And then you will present that to the, to the business, so then the business doesn't need to go find a, a, an architect. Or have to bid for an architect. I want to eliminate all that. I want to make sure that we have an architect that's going to design the facade. And going to present option to the business.
That's definitely an option.
Okay, because I, because the way you described is gonna take a lot of time, and people got to find an architect, they have to design the facade. They have to come to the planning department, we have to approve what is approved, uh-uh, that's not working.
Yeah.
It's not work. They need to create our own architect that is going to design the facades the way. You know, Hawthorne wants to envision a beautiful, and then present this design to the business that who apply. This is what your option have. You have option A, B, or C. And then they said, we want this, that, this one. Bang, it's done and begin.
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember English.
You got it?
No, I, 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 you, you got me all hyped up. My gosh, I'm hyped, I'm hyped. Uh, so thank you for the uh, the annual action plan for a commercial rehab. I love all the things that you said with regards to. Uh, economic de- uh, devast- uh, disadvantaged uh businesses um, that are just also just, just repaired. Uh, and or code enforced, uh, enforcement violations. Um, the el- the eligible design that we're gonna be working with the community on for community outreach. So all of that is great uh points that we need to make when we are discussing this in the community. So please make sure that we target exactly what you said, so that the community understands what we're trying to do in beautifying our city. And more importantly, uh, our corridors and businesses. And I agree totally with regards to uh providing a service to the business community that benefits them the most. And I think once they see that the city is leveraging and assisting where architectural needs are needed, design plans, et cetera. I think they're gonna be more willing to do that versus coming out of pocket, especially during this time of COVID. In the year that some of these businesses might have been closed for a period of time. So it, 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 it's a good thought. Um, we worked collectively as a council. Uh, to bring um ultimately the marching orders for your department and those ultimately responsible. To reaching to those, reaching out to those communities of, uh, business and, and, and um, exactly what you just said earlier. Let's, let's stay focused on why we're having to do this and the importance, and that's because of the neighboring city, the community of Inglewood. That is uh, you know, hot right now. It's hot, and we need to be able to uh entice and, and, and bring over some of that uh spill. That we're gonna get into our community, because they're gonna be looking for services too, whatever that service may be. And so anything we could do to bring uh economic development in a way of facade improvements. And improving the community, uh, business community, we're on the right track. So uh, Mr. Palmer, anything we could do to help you in your efforts? And then ultimately, we're probably gonna have this item come back to us with these types of amendments that were just made mention on how we could make those improvements. And make those a little bit fast, uh, streamlined faster. So thank you.
And to, to the chat quick.
Go ahead.
Uh, for, for Robert, uh, because I still want to give them a choice. Like, if we come up with the architects and design and uh from different facades. Uh, and then when the business say, yes, I wanna be particip- a participant on this program, we can show them the option. But if they said, I don't like none of them, then they have a choice to go find their own architect and submit. And submit the plan, okay? But first, we wanna say, it's not gonna cost nothing from your pocketbook. And we have everything in-house, the architect, the design team, and the thing, and, and, and move the process quickly. Because we don't wanna go, you know, waiting for forever. So that's the kind of thing that I wanna focus. Thank you.
Will we, will you guys accept the motion?
Yes, with the, with our recommendation.
Your motion on the floor, is your motion is your second?
I made, yeah, I made a motion.
I second with my recommendation to, to bring.
My third.
All right, roll call vote.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine? Mayor Proton Valentine?
She might be stuck.
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
And let me try Mayor Proton Valentine.
Yeah, no, she said yes.
She said yes.
Yeah, um, yeah.
I said yes. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, just a quick thing of uh uh Vaughn, uh just tell tell them why uh Kimberly is not, is is under the weather. So that's why she's not here tonight, right? Kimberly Mack.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, what was that? Can you repeat that?
Kimberly Mack is is under the weather, so she's.
Oh, well, okay, yeah.
So we hope her well.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, uh, item twenty-four, there are no items on the city attorney's consent counter. And uh we have three uh items. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, I believe local travel network was addressed previously. Would you like to say anything else on that or are we?
Well, the the reason I put it on at this time was because I was going to um I was going to ask to uh, I was going to give a directive that the uh city work with the uh with the South Bay Council of Governments to um to develop um a a program that fits the city of Hawthorne. And I think we've, I already did that, I already did that with the um when we had earlier discussion. So with that, I don't think, is that correct? Um, interim city manager, you have direction for me on uh working with the uh South Bay Council of Governments?
Yes, Councilmember Valen Pro Tim Valentine, direction was given and will be followed up on.
Alright, that's fine. I have, I have nothing else on this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, discussion action item number twenty-seven is on creating a supervisory employment position to oversee both the planning and building and safety departments. Councilman Montero, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. So um as you heard, you know, the presentation from Mister Jack Wong, right? Uh, we need to come up with a position, uh 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 a a director of community developer administrator that will oversee the planning and the building and safety. Because those two department are very critical for our sustainability, right? Those two department is the one that brings us some money for our general funds. And the planning and the building and safety has been on odds. And you know, in the, we have heard, oh, the plan is on the the my 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 architect plans, is that the plan? Oh, no, no, is that the building? Oh, no, 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 it's not the plan. So we need to create an administrator there that could have a manager the both departments, the planning and the building and safety. And now with with the recommendation from Mister Wong, I also would say that we need to create that navigator uh individual also based on his recommendation. So I want to give a directive, if you could guys support me on this, for Vaughn and this intercity attorney to bring us in the maybe the next council meeting or in two weeks or in um a resolution to create these positions because we have to create this position uh and and has to be done with the ordinance or resolution. So I want us to create that director, community developer administrator, and that navigator uh position that Mister Wong recommend upstairs.
I like the, I like the idea. Um, just the only thing is, um, what do we have to? We can have a manager, why do we have to have a director? I mean, it's the same.
Well, because because it's gonna be supervisory, right? Because they're going to uh basically uh the two maybe the plant, the building and safety director currently is going to report to this person. And instead of us hiring a planning director, we will have an assistant planning director. Okay, and then in the in 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 the future, when the the director of building and safety retired, we would hire an assistant director instead of a director. Do you understand?
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Um, so like, I'm I'm sorry, I'm gonna move on to my council member colleagues, but uh if uh Mister City Manager, if you could, in the process of, um, I'm willing to support this idea. But uh just try to find out where we just don't add added costs to our budget, maybe like do attrition or however we can do it.
But uh Mister Mayor, just think about it that uh, you know, we have been saving a lot of money on staff and we need to uh make sure that our our salary is competitive to other cities. Because we've been losing a lot of staff because they're going somewhere else because they're getting paid more money, okay? That's a, that's a truth. Because because remember, uh if we, if you did a study, the salary of Hawthorne compares some other people, people are behind ten years. Okay, so that is what we need to begin to step up our game and make sure we pay people what they deserve and what and with the experience that they have, because then we we go, we're gonna get second-class citizens instead of first top class.
Alright, alright.
That's what you need to be thinking about the city, okay? That we want to be top-class city.
Well, okay, no, I I I just don't wanna get into.
Just say yes, just say yes.
You know where I was, you know where I was gonna go with this. I'm just. That'd be cool, okay? And and Councilmember English knows where I was gonna go with that, but okay. Councilmember Patterson and then Councilmember English.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. So uh actually, Mister Montero, if I can ask you a question directly. So you're suggesting that in addition to that navigator position, we hire this administrative position overseeing both departments. Um, had the the gentleman that made that recommendation, does he have an opinion on on needing both of those?
Well, because he said, if you heard what he said, he said that these two department are disconnect. Uh, I wrote the word.
Internal communication we need to increase.
Yeah, he he mentioned that these two department needs to be connect, okay? Even he could be, he he recommend that for us to add planning, building and safety and public works. But I know public work is 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 right now is not in question. It's been, they've been done on outstanding work. Public works because they have engineers over there, so they they are fine. Is the planning and the building and safety that we have difficulty? There is challenge there. So we need to to create that because the the guy, you know, Mister Wong said we need to make sure that these department are in sync. And that I want to restructure the way he recommend to bring these two departments together, have think about maybe even redesign upstairs that they will not be separate by walls.
Greater communication, of course. Also, it sounded like one of the issues that he brought up is the turnover, turnover we've had in our planning department. He didn't mention that department specifically, but we all know we've gone through fifteen directors in eight years, right? Um, and that that's that's caused a lack of uh procedural manuals. Um, just kind of looking at the notes I took. So really, my question is, do you think the solution is just having doing a better job of hiring a planning director as opposed to having to hire this administrative personnel oversees both both departments?
Well, that administrator, the poor uh guy or person or lady, they they will, they will have the expertise of planning and building and safety.
We've got a poor job just finding somebody who has a good expertise in planning that wants to say.
You will still have to have an assistant planning director, singer, a singer planner, and and all those 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 positions. Uh, but this person is the one is going to be the, I like the connector, like the telehealth, it's gonna be the connector of the building and safety because I have experienced that, oh, no, my planes are the building and say, oh, no, no, is that, is that the plan? Uh, oh, no, I'm waiting for the plan. Oh, no, 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 I'm waiting for the building and say. So so that have, somebody have to be accountable. And right now, we don't have no accountability. And and believe it or not, I heard from from a young kid. We have check plan that goes back two years backlog that's still waiting to be checked. We have a hundred and sixty voicemails to be answered. So that cannot happen. So that's what, that is why we, right now, we see all these people helping somewhere else, Inglewood, Carson, Gardena uh and Hawthorne is just suck on the tongue.
Now, I it makes sense for me to have a navigator, which I'm familiar with that position in other cities, that there should be somebody who kind of oversees that navigator and be administrative person, see oversees both.
The navigator, the supervisor directors or assistant directors, right? So that's what you have to have that person on top.
Finish, let me finish. So I can understand the need for that administrative position that oversees both departments, especially if you have a navigator that goes between the two. However, it sounds like from what everybody is saying, from what you're saying, the other gentleman's saying, our issues is understaffed um in a rank and file, like if we're behind two years or or, you know, in one one department, another or a lot of calls haven't been returned and all itself, hiring a and as a super um director is not gonna, and I can go through all that work. So it looks, it sounds like what we really need to address is the the rank and file staff, having the right people on the bus in that respect, having enough people in those departments to get through the work. You know, my question is, do we need more uh people at the top overseeing people or do we need more people actually doing the work, right?
You need, you need both. You need both, uh David, because when you look at all these other cities, you know, they have that person. They have, they have building and planning in one department that see by it, by it, by it, by administrative director. So that is what I said, let let's start to get to the twenty-first century because we already twenty-one year behind to these other cities, the way they do business, because we have not done business correctly. And the guy pointed out, because of the policy and procedures, or because of turnover of the staff, so there is no accountability, there is no efficiency, so we need to fix that. And I think the best thing to do is to have this person and and then uh and I believe the department will be, the the those two two department will be better run. And then they'll be able to to work with the planning, uh building and safety staff and the planning staff. And and I think we will see a tremendous improvement. Now, navigator, the navigator is is much, almost like a a data clerk. She logs in the plan, okay, my plan came in on on July twenty-seven and is gonna go to the department. And then it's gonna go, see, she can keep tracking this plan, then go from the plan if I'm building and safety.
Why does it need to be a she?
I'm saying she or he, it doesn't, cause you know, the the navigator position, I just heard it tonight. And and I like the idea that we will have this person there that that can guide when people called, they go on the computer and say, oh, your 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 plan is on this stage and tomorrow is gonna go to the code enforcement, so make sure you meet with the code enforcement.
You see?
Sure. So the one last thing though, eh uh I, conceptually, you know, I, all this makes sense though, but it brings up the point that we definitely need to address our ability to select the right people in these departments.
Yes.
Because more than lacking that supervisor, somehow our city has done a poor job in attracting or retaining quality people in these departments. Cause we've seen a a tremendous amount of turnover in these departments.
Yes.
And not mu- much has gotten done as a result.
Yes.
So opening up another position is not the only answer. We need to make sure we we fix whatever this turnover issue is in that department. Because uh uh as I'm sure we all know, turnover is one of the most expensive expenses any organization can have.
Yes.
So.
So but it's it's a first step for us to fix the problem upstairs.
Councilmember English?
Uh, let me just say retweet uh Patterson and and Montero, okay? Um, so let me just say this first of all, uh I know that there's a lot of department heads here on uh council tonight. And uh we're not trying to take away from their positions along their titles.
Nope.
Uh, I want to obviously um make some recommendations and suggestions, but uh since we're here, we're discussing the the issues in these particular departments, it's just not their departments, it's across the board. Okay, let's be clear with that.
Yeah.
Um, I I I I think ultimately uh our department heads are important. And I think ultimately, we we look to them for their leadership. And because during this trying time of the year that we've had the pandemic, we've received a lot more complaints from constituents than most. But we all know in our position that oftentimes, there's always two sides to a story, right? So let's make sure that uh when we're implementing a position, that we're talking about addressing the concerns of the community, especially those in these departments that ultimately do plan checks and do building and safety and have anything to do with uh issuance, right? That um we're creating something that is gonna assist in those efforts. In other words, uh we don't wanna duplicate efforts here because ultimately it becomes redundant. What I'd like to ultimately see, since you spoke on this and because I'm aware in, you know, city of Los Angeles, you often have an embedsman. An embedsman, that is the lead, who takes the complaints from those constituents and is then working with those departments to see where their item is at or where their work is at, where the project is at. And that embedsman ultimately is the communicator and the buffer in between making the con- the connection with the department heads. And so um it could be either an embedsman position, it could be a chief of general services position where they're overseeing those departments. But what I wa- I don't wanna take away again from uh the importance of our department heads and um their positions. So again, just to be clear, we're addressing the immediate need and foreseeing in the future how we could better streamline communications between these two departments and those individuals that will be working with an embedsman or chief general services to address where their concerns or where their project is at at any given time. That's my hope. That's my hope. And uh I know, again, um we value the work that is being done by our, all of our departments and uh we're working harder to assure that everyone's concerns are being addressed. And again, I can't take away from the customer service campaign that we're working on. Some of the information that was provided to us from the consultant that gave us um his opinion on some of the things that were uh lacking and where we need to make improvements. It's it's truly nothing new to me because this is something that I've been hearing in history. So, and there's some history that I've had uh with regards to communicating with uh Hawthorne in general, where businesses and families and communities uh that are trying to get uh their work done in their um homes or otherwise, so I I I like it, however, I want to get more information on what this ultimately uh looks like. What would be the description? What would be ult- the ultimate goal? And more importantly, working collectively with those existing department heads that also are responsible for assuring that uh we are getting the work done and that folks are ultimately pleased with the work and stop contacting the city council because they can't get any uh, can't get what they need with those that are in position today. So again, I value our department heads, please. Let's not.
We all do.
Mix words. I I I I, for myself and the council members, I'm sure, but me speaking, I just want to assure that the department uh that that individual or individuals, I don't know, he or she, okay? He or she, uh, again, department chief general services embedsman to assist in uh the communications and uh streamlining the processes, but we still have a lot of work to do.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I support uh the position of getting um a direct, a a director's position that would be over the planning, planning and building and safety department. I think that would increase accountability. So I support that uh that position. I think we
Yeah.
I think we um, we need that accountability. I think uh the consultant was very clear that there was frustration, especially with the building and safety department getting services, people getting services from the building and safety department. So we, I think we need that accountability and I support the idea of having um a direct, I would be a director's position, I think, over the both both departments. And also I support the idea, the uh position of having a navigator. I think that's uh, that's a good, that's a great idea. I support both of those.
Alright, you you have support, uh Councilmember Montero. Um, and then I would also like to add, maybe we can consider the licensing aspect being integrated in there somehow?
Yes.
Okay, so I I don't think we mentioned that. Um, licensing aspect with regards to the planning and building aspect.
Upstairs.
Sep- separate, yeah, an individual up there, um separate from what's out there, the cashier's office and the licensing down there for other stuff, okay? Alright, excellent. Thank you very much.
Hold on, so 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 we gave Vaughn and the city attorney and to go ahead to create this transformation and these positions, right? Cause I got three votes, yes.
Well, I asked for more information. I want.
I got three votes to proceed.
Okay.
August Valentine and myself.
But you asked him to come back.
Well, but yeah, they have to bring the resolution or ordinance, uh uh.
Yes.
Robert Kim?
Yes, please, please, everyone, please.
Robert.
I'm just saying, I wanna, I wanna look at what it looks like, right? What's the title? What's, you know?
Yeah, so let let Robert speak.
So it'll be by ordinance. We're creating a new position. Um, there'll be quite a bit of work ahead of time because of um negotiating with H E G, are we adding a position to the H E G? Uh, from my understanding, I'm hearing creation of two new position, one being a navigator and one being a overseeing supervisory role for both planning, business. And one being a overseeing supervisory role for both planning, business, I mean, I'm sorry, planning. Uh, building and safety and licensing department. So it will be by ordinance now. Um, in terms of directive, I, I, it appears that there's not a hundred percent agreement between council members, so. I'll prefer that we take a vote on this. Um, and so that, uh, it would give us the direction to start drafting whatever we need to do, uh, in terms of the ordinance.
And it'll be planning and.
Let me clarify something, hold on, Robert, because you, you, uh, I'm not saying, well, the, the, the. I'm not saying that person's gonna be overseeing the licensing, okay? The only thing that I think we're gonna do about the license is to get the recommendation from Mister Wong. To move somebody from downstairs to upstairs, so can collect fees. That related to building and safety, uh, you know, checks, right? But the, the director position will be an administrator supervisor. So he can be the director of both department, have, have expertise. In, in, in management, super- supervision and have to have a knowledge of. Planning and building and safety, because that's the one that I want the new position to be created. At the end, we talk about create that navigator position. So, so you got one that is gonna be a supervisory director, a director position, that have all the title. Of su- supervision, management, set the set. Then you have this navigator that is a lower, I, I call it data enter clerk per se. For the upstairs, for, for this to combine the. So we can vote on that director, because I think you have three votes to go ahead.
Make the motion.
I make a motion to create that director community developer administrator.
And the navigating third position.
That will see the planning and building and safety. And also the navigator. Got some motion. For mayor protest.
You changed it, Montero.
I did not change it.
You added something third, you added something.
What do you need, what do you need, the city clerk, go ahead.
I need a point of clarification, uh, a motion was made by council member Montero, I didn't hear the second.
Oh, ma- mayor protest.
Oh, thank you. All right, uh, with that, we have a motion on the floor with the second, uh, council member Montero. Council member Patterson?
Can you restate the motion, so I'm very clear?
Actually, that's a good point, go, please restate the motion, uh, council member Montero. Or wait a minute, can we, can we have our city attorney restate that, just to make sure that they understood?
Yes, um, so the motion is to create a new supervisory position that would oversee. Uh, the planning and building and safety departments. And create a new position of navigating clerk position, a lower position. Um, that would take, uh, uh, basically a counter clerk position for planning and building and safety.
With this, um, council member Montero and Mister, uh, city attorney. Bringing that licensing person upstairs with that, would, we need to incorporate?
I don't think that, I don't think that.
Didn't require, no, that wouldn't require an ordinance, I, I thought originally that it was.
That's not part of this motion.
Yeah, that's not part of this motion, because that, that is Vaughn.
Organize the city manager.
The city managed to go do the reorganization.
You sounded upset, man. All right, go ahead, uh, roll call vote, please.
Thank you, uh, once again, uh, council member Montero. Council member Patterson. Uh, council member, uh, Reyes English? Thank you, mayor protest Valentine? And Mayor Vargas. Five to zero to create those two new positions.
City clerk, can you read item number twenty eight?
Yes, Mister Mayor, item number twenty eight. With the discussion item for automating city hall services and, and they will explain the current efforts and goals.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to, uh, uh, I, I'm gonna share the, uh, this discussion item with council member Patterson. It's basically a directive, guys, it's basically a directive. Um, and you guys saw today that there was, uh, concerns with regards to the flow of. The permitting process and then the inspections and the building and safety aspects. And, uh, we were getting calls from the residents, from some residents are trying to do some modifications on their homes. Businesses that are trying to open up shop, developments, developers. And, you know, I'll be frank, you know, I, I believe that, uh, by automating this. I think we're going to eliminate a lot of the questions. Um, and having the applicants do most of their work online would be of great benefit to them. And I believe that, uh, it would minimize the human interaction with our, with, uh. Between our staff and those that are out there, because what it, do you really need to? Have to walk in to pay a, to pay a ticket, to pay a fine, to pay a business license, you could do that all online. Uh, and we don't have that right now, but I know that our city manager and staff and our chief and all the I T people. Are looking at that and maybe moving stuff along. Not, not today, not today, but if you could just give us an update on that, uh, through, through a memo. Uh, Mister City Manager, on anything you do have, but we just wanna re, we, I just, I think we just wanna highlight the, the need for this. Going online, you're gonna apply for, you know, for a permit to be able to, uh, to cre- to build a pool in their backyard. You know, step one, step two, step three, fill this por- portion out, you know, fill everything you can up front. And then what we have is people on the backend taking a look at that, and you're looking at all the documentation. And being able to click and give feedback to the, to whoever the applicant is, is say, hey, you know what, you're missing this, this and that, blah, blah, blah. But it's all automated, we need people in front of the computer processing these things, looking at these things. And then moving people along, I believe there, there's monday dot com, it's like a flowchart type of, uh, system that moves a project along. Um, I think we, we need to fully implement that into an integrated system where you do most of your applications online. Uh, I forget this paper stuff, I'm tired of this paper crap, you know?
What is these land management tools?
Uh, and then so, the, I just believe that we need to just do away with that and, uh, be able to, um, just have most of this stuff started online. Apply online and then people come in and then are, if they need to come in to discuss anything with, uh, staff. They, they're called in, but there's just no reason why we can't be like other cities that already have systems in place. Council member Patterson?
I had my hand up.
Oh no, council, I'm sharing this with council member Patterson, he needs to talk first.
So, um, I agree, we need to, uh, take advantage of the technology that exists. So that the public can do business with the city electronically. Um, I know with, uh, the city of Carson, for instance, during COVID, everybody went online. To make any kind of payments, to pursue things. Uh, I personally have a, a, a business license that I, I picked up in the city of Culver City. And I was gonna go to their website to apply for that business license and, and, and pursue that. So I, I think that, um, our constituents should be able to, to, uh. To handle a lot of business with the city through our website. Well, we might even wanna consider having kiosks in the, in the lobby for the citizens to come and initiate things. So I, I definitely support us using technology to kinda automate a lot of these processes. Um, I think it'll do a number of things, you know, and first, actually, I'm gonna take a step back, I wanna preface all this with saying that. Wanna acknowledge what, what the consultant said that, uh, he found no issue with the current way. That things are being done in business licenses, because our processing time and, uh, development permitting are within what's expected. But I think we can definitely improve the experience for our constituents wanting to do business with our city. So, uh, by embracing techno- technology, it can make things easier on staff. We can reduce human interaction, that's may not be necessary, we don't have to take off work to come down to city hall. Uh, reduce contact, because we're still deal- dealing with COVID and now COVID variant. And so, and I know we're using, we are implementing some new technology with, uh, intergov. As well as monday dot com, I think it's kind of an interim system. So, uh, with, I guess, what we're implementing, might already have this stuff in mind. But I definitely wanna recommend that we, we definitely have the ability for people to, to use technology to get a business license to. Even submit permits or, or apply for, you know, some permits online, so I'm all with it.
Okay, um, yeah, so it's just basically just highlighting what, you know, what our concerns is, and you know what, it all worked out all, we had like two presentations. Another item that with, with regards to staff presentations, I mean, like, it's all coming together, I think we all share the same concerns. So it's just a directive, Mister City Manager, just give us what, give us an update on what you have, take some of our c- feedback into consideration. Mayor protest and then councilman Montero and then council member English, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, um, I believe that, uh, we probably can get. A great deal of this paid for through COVID funding, because, um, it's been the, um, the position of the, of the government, the federal government. That, um, they wanted to encourage, uh, online, um. Uh, uh, gaining online access, so that people wouldn't have to meet necessarily in person. So I think, uh, we, uh, I wanted to ask, um, Vaughn if, uh, he could also investigate. Um, how much of these, uh, funds could we, could we use for this, this project? I think we could use a great deal of, uh, COVID funding for this.
Great idea.
Okay, councilman Montero?
All right, thank you, Mr. Me. Uh, I, I, first I wanna find out what is this, uh, land management that Mister Wong was talking about? Cause he mentioned, uh, monday dot com and also he said that we are going to implement the land management tool.
He said we're, Monday is a temporary system we're using until we fully implement intergov.
Yes, okay, then to go, so the other, I like idea of the key, key word, that, that, the co- us in the lobby, that's fantastic. Um, the other thing that I would say, uh, to have, when we implement the system. You know, if it's online, to make sure that the system have some type of a tutorial, right? A tutorial like is English and Spanish to tell people how, you know, if they got stuck and they can click on this little windows will tell them. Uh, you know, how to fill out that form correctly, right? Cause we're gonna have, you know, uh, some, they need to have some, some, some guidance, some tutorial thing. And, and, and I agree with Ms. Valentine about the COVID money, because the, for example, the state. Uh, give, give some money that, uh, I just bought a system for the, for the preschool, for the council. That is, is, you know, it's in the cloud. So parents can go there and fill up all the application, put all the immunization information for the children. So everything is become automated and, and technology. So I think we'd like, again, as I said, we need to come, we need to start to, to, to go to the. You know, twenty first century and we twenty years behind.
Council member English?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a good idea, I'm all for, um, automation and I'm all for streamlining. Uh, yes, I agree with counsel Montero, it's long overdue. Uh, I, 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 I'm hoping and, and I'm sure most. That the recovery dollars and or being reimbursed for these types of im- implementations could ultimately benefit us all in the long run. But, uh, we should create, uh, somehow, um. Everything that would be automated, everything that we have in city hall, um. Police department, anything that should be automated, we need to make sure that we have all of those noted. Uh, and, and be able to do that versus, you know, leaving one out or the other. And, uh, having to circle back and implement something more and, you know, cost et- etcetera. So let's just, uh, do it right the first time.
Okay, thank you, council member Patterson, thank you, uh, the council member colleagues for your feedback. Mister City Manager, uh, please incorporate this feedback into a plan that you see fit. And give us, you know, give us what the plan is, and take, investigate, see what's out there also. All right, uh, n- number twenty nine, we're, uh, elected officials reports, recommendations, it's kinda late, guys. So I really encourage you guys to keep your comments brief, I mean, if you went on vacation, just, you know, send us an email with pictures, but. Let's try to keep it to the, to the gist of the. Even I, I, I would love to tell you about my trip to San Diego and all the good food I ate over the, but, you know.
See, now you're telling us about.
I broke the rule.
Stop talking.
Okay, uh, Mister City Treasure?
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me? Well, it's good talks. Um, yeah, the, the homeless thing is, I mean, it's really something, uh, but, uh, it would be nice too if. I know there's a lot of programs and millions of dollars for different, you know, helping, uh, the homeless, but. If there was like an organization just picked up the trash, the homeless garbage, that'd be great too. Uh, cause I know like certain parts of Hawthorne, there's a lot of garbage. And it's something that, you know, the residents, you know, they also are affected by it too, like it'd be a good service to the residents of the city. You know, if there, some of that money went to just picking up, uh, the garbage. Um, and then financial stuff, everything's, uh, been going, you know, fine, uh, we have, we had a lot of stuff come due and. Interest rates are just terribly low right now, so it's, it's hard to make, uh, good investments in the limited things the city can do. Um, and that's all I have to report.
Oh, Mister City Treasure, that was a great idea of, uh, finding a nonprofit to pick up the garbage. If you could help us find something and identify something, that would be great and.
I'm gonna set one up, it'll cost a million bucks. Garbage for like a million bucks.
Now, just take a quick look, man, see if there really is something out there, and if there is, just give it to us and we'll work with it, okay?
Why not, why not, why not your department, city treasure partner with the nonprofit and you handle that?
Nah, come on, you're putting all this fine, dude.
No, look at the city clerk, the city clerk is cleaning, uh, the community, he has volunteers. He goes out and he cleans the community, that's all.
Yeah, I need someone to teach us, like, how do we, like, they need to educate the citizens on how to handle homeless interaction, you know, like. If, you know, somebody's, you know, doing something or we supposed, could you guys hand out pepper spray? I mean, I don't know what's gonna happen, because it's supposedly just gonna keep getting worse.
Yeah, we don't want no lawsuits. Let me tell you, let me tell you real quick, in the city of Los Angeles, uh, homeless encampments need to be notified through eviction process, which includes. Posting that the location that they're at is gonna be cleaned in a certain amount of time. And they have, uh, notice that they need to move. And so when they move, they only take their belongings and they leave everything else behind, so we schedule a, a cleanup.
Recall's coming.
We removed the.
Time to recall, it's a disaster, I mean, it's a total disaster, it's really sad.
All right, thank you, Mister City Treasure, but if you have any ideas, just please send it, send it to us privately if you could, okay? All right, uh, council member Reyes English?
Yes, thank you, so, um, Thursday, on Thursday, I had an opportunity to visit each department in the city. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, Vaughn for helping me do that, I had asked him to give me a tour of the city. And that included the airport, uh, public works, uh, the, all the de- the departments here and at city hall. Uh, and it included, uh, visiting, uh, wrecking parks. And so I wanted to be able to just let staff know that we see them, we hear them, we want them to provide us a list, a wish list of sorts. That they need for their department, uh, with the recovery dollars that we're receiving. And wanted their input and how important that is to us, and so I asked them to pass that information along to their supervisors, the department heads. Ultimately to Vaughn, so that we could get an assessment of what the needs are here in our departments and more importantly, for the workforce. Um, I also wanna thank, uh, Chief Ishi in the police department, I did a ride along on Friday evening. Uh, my ride along started at six P M, I finished at midnight. I wanna thank, um, Officer Erica Marikin for helping me. Uh, understand a little bit more and, and, and giving me, uh, some education. On exactly what happens on any given night while out enforcing and providing public safety to the community, so. I appreciate greatly, um, all that they're doing here in Hawthorne and addressing, uh, not so much, um, you know. The, the crime, but just, uh, being able to also talk with residents and there was a lot of residents that, um. You know, look up to the police, they do talk to them, they do provide them information about what's happening in the community, and so it was good to just see that too. But, uh, I wanna thank, uh, again, um, Sergeant Craig and all of those that coordinated and made efforts. To, uh, help me, uh, do the ride along and also, um, a transport, we had to transport someone to, uh, Gardena Hospital and so. All of that was good and, and, um, enjoyed that. Um, other than that, I think we're doing great progress here in the city where it comes to, uh. You know, policy and legislation that is important to the people of Hawthorne. I wanna appreciate, I wanna thank, first of all, all those folks that do call me, text me, email me and bring to my attention things that are concerning to them. And, uh, I wanna know that we're working collectively together to address all those concerns. I want to, uh, make sure that we have, um, a policy that we put on the agenda, city managers, city attorney, where it comes to solar panels. What we're charging and what those costs are, um, passing those on correctly to those residents that are choosing solar panels for their homes. Uh, I also have a complaint with regards to the car wash on Inglewood Avenue, constituents are complaining about the noise that is happening. From that business and that's something we need to look at, it has to do with, um, their. And that's something we need to look at. It has to do with um their uh vacuum system and it has to do with um. Uh activity taking place there and I know we addressed the loud noise, which was their speakers or radios or. I don't know what they're doing out there, music, but we still need to find some remedy on that. And this is coming from constituents that live directly across from the property. I still wanna bring fireworks to the agenda. I wanna ultimately talk uh in length with regards to whether or not we're gonna eliminate fireworks here in Hawthorne. And again, hearing from the community, uh it's something that should be addressed and we need to take um. This this item seriously and put it on the agenda. I wanna talk about citations on how we could ultimately raise some of the citations that are needed in our city. To um ultimately um, you know. Help in making efforts to to address the the bad, the bad actors here in our city. And I'm talking about, you know, parking, parking on in preferential uh parking locations that are not permitted. Uh what those costs are and how we can ultimately raise those tickets. And um also issues with regards to street sweeping and cars still not moving. So a lot of these things are important, uh and then ultimately going back, circling back. Uh citations that will be high in cost with regards to illegal fireworks. Then ultimately, I wanna discuss um. Uh 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 Public Works where it comes to making this feasibility study assessment on the parking that we have here in the city of Hawthorne and how I've talked about that. Back when uh we had the previous administration. I want to see ultimately uh striping on streets that we can ultimately waive fees on to help improve the parking situation. Again, there's um too many times that cars are taking up um too many spaces, not allowing for others to be able to park. And that to me is um, you know, not being a good neighbor. And so I wanna address that and I wanna see how we could ultimately give discretion to the Public Works on working on that plan. I spoke about uh being able to open both sides of the street so that we could be able to park, but I also understand that we need that center. Uh medium open to for vehicles to be able to have access and be able to come in and out of that street. So I'm using um having the Public Works use discretion on how we're gonna address our parking needs. Lastly, I just wanna um thank everybody for the early birthday wishes. Um I have a birthday tomorrow. Please feel free to join me. I'll be at Me California and you're welcome to have dinner. Uh so uh for those department uh heads and those that are here, I'm putting it out there, right? So you're more than welcome to come and have dinner at Me California with me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montero?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um again, I wanna say uh thank you for the uh for the three comments from the public. Uh they were very, you know, constructive about, you know, one twenty and and parking and speeding cars. So and then the one sixteen, so I'm I'm hoping that next meeting will address that issue on one sixteen. Um I wanna thanks the all the head departments, you know, because we know that uh, believe me. We understand that some of the department have skeleton crew and we are trying to address all these issues. So I wanna thanks my colleagues uh for voting about the restructuring our City Hall. To create positions that will be um more direct, accountable and flexibility. And we want to improve all these services so our constituent will be happy about the city of Hawthorne. And we want to create more jobs opportunity. We wanna create more uh developments that is common sense, business development. So so we have um a lot of potential coming to Hawthorne, so we wanna make sure that the City Hall is ready for it. And that is why uh I made all these recommendations to to create positions and to make sure that. That our staff and 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 we are addressing issue that has been related to all of us. Because we got those calls, we got those emails, so I appreciate all your support on that. I just wanna mention that on Saturday, the thirty first, we're going to have the farmers market there. From ten to three and um I can guarantee you, you're gonna have fruits and veggies, so be there. On Saturday from uh from ten to three at the Berryans Wood Parking Lot. Uh and also I wanna mention that tomorrow, there will be a food drive at the Berryans Wood Parking Lot. From nine to twelve, uh where the uh Holly Mitchell, the supervisor. And and the L A Food Bank uh is gonna be there distributing food again, so tomorrow ten A M. Uh nine A M tomorrow at the Berryans Wood. Uh and just keep in mind, you know, we're still in summer. So uh we wanna encourage all of you, please vaccinate, go take the COVID vaccine if you're not. Because you see how we were doing well and then suddenly we have this uh Delta variant that is causing trouble. So we're starting to see more hospitalization, more more people getting sick. So please, if you're not vaccinated, please do it, because all of us here are vaccinated. So we want to open City Hall soon to you, but we wanna make sure that it's safe and and everybody is healthy out there. So again, um stay cool, the weather, it was kinda cool this this week, but it's gonna warm up again. Uh thank you and uh have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Patterson?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things I wanna bring up. I know at one point we talked about hiring a recruitment firm for our, to recruit for. City manager, the City Manager, City Attorney. I I I don't know if we've got an official report of what that would cost and I don't know, we may put it on the next agenda to discuss. Um pursuing that versus doing that in-house. Cause I I hear that might be kind of cost prohibitive prohibitive to go, you know, to a recruitment firm. Also, I know we're in a process of finding a new um some new people in our H R department. But I want to make sure that we were still going to um have the evaluations. That we had discussed with our previous um H R Director. And I still wanna recommend that we do three sixty evaluations for those that are in management um and above. I did want to thank the community for making voices heard, for tuning in and just paying attention to what what's happening in your city. I know it's exciting, right? So I was encouraged to to tell all your your neighbors to tune in as well. I wanna thank staff for all the hard work you do. I know obviously we were going through some transitions over the last few months. And um, you know, uh you know, th- those that are are have been committed to doing great work for the community, I wanna thank you. Appreciate you. And I uh wanna notice or or bring notice to our new website. Uh I love you always been to our website um recently, but. It's changed, it's gone through an update and so it definitely looks good and I'm looking forward to seeing any, you know, how it might continue to evolve. Especially as we're able to um interact with the city online and use technology to pay for things. Uh and I wanna say happy birthday to uh Councilwoman Angie Reyes English.
Thank you. By the way, it's six o'clock tomorrow night. I forgot to give the time.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Olivia Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor. Um so I wanna thank staff, especially Guido Fernandez for our Airport Manager. For presenting the Hawthorne uh Airport Noise Exposure Map Update. So that it can be submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration. The grant was replied for because the city was aware that there had been significant operational and fleet mix changes at the airport since the previous study. And we wanted the most up to date data available so that we could revisit potential noise mitigation measures. It has been my pleasure to serve on the Planning Advisory Committee for that study. And to also serve on the on- ongoing K H H R Communities Network Committee, which. Discuss this uh discusses the impact of noise on the communities and to lend my support to the airport wherever necessary. I also want to thank Ms. Jackie Bakarack, Executive Director of the South Bay Cities Council of Governments. For presenting to cities the opportunity to modify their streets, to make it feasible to have the right size small vehicles for local trips. In the South Bay, seventy percent of the trips are three miles or less. That statement made a big impact on me. Do we really need to take our primary vehicle on all those small trips? I think the answer is no. We could benefit from the local travel network and I'm excited about the prospect of investigating the feasibility. And the last thing I have is National Night Out, which uh. I'm sure you've seen the flyer and if you haven't, uh it should be on the website. Uh Mr. City Manager, is it on the website now? Our flyer?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's it's next Tuesday. So um you know what the National Ni- uh Night Out is all about? Um cities in different parts of, cities all over the country. Come out, communities come out to celebrate the hopeful, hopefully good relationships. Between the communities and their police departments. So we in Hawthorne really appreciate our police department. And we definitely want to show our appreciation on National Night Out. So the theme this year is creating a safer Hawthorne. And there will, and it's sponsored, the sponsors are the Holly Park Neighborhood Association, the Ramona Park Neighbor. Uh Neighborhood Association, the Parkside Village Social Committee and um. Entertainment is going to be provided by the Delray Community Jazz Band and our own mayor, who is going to be the D J. And you have to come out just to see that alone. So that's Tuesday, August third, from five to eight P M at Hawthorne Memorial Park. There will be food, drinks, music, games, raffles and more. If you want more information, co- uh contact the Community Services Department at three one oh, three four nine, one six four zero. Um and with that, I I all I want to say a- at this time is to thank staff. Uh I do appreciate all of you. Thank you for all the hard work. Thank you for your reporting. Thank you for uh working under really difficult circumstances over the past two, a couple of months or so. And I really want you to know that we appreciate everything you're doing and we're going to work with you to the best of our ability. And with that, um I will say good night.
Are there any go-bags? Okay, so um residents, uh thank you for being here. I mean, I know it's a late meeting. We're going to incorporate five closed sessions in one. In one closed session, we're gonna, we're going to report out on all five. I I I don't think they're gonna take too long. I think they're just pretty straightforward. Um and uh. Uh man, I forgot about different things. There was just a whole bunch of. Well, the one thing that's most important to me, I know I've received a lot of complaints and I know. Uh the homelessness issues, those who are on house, that's a a very s- uh serious issue. We need to make sure that we support those that are on the street, but. My responsibility is to the people who live here in the city of Hawthorne, residents who live here. Okay, you know, people who rent here, who decided to, you know, raise their families here. Okay, it's unfortunate what's happening out there and we need to have a balanced approach. But when it comes down to protecting our children from seeing people that are defecating in the streets. That are, you know, going onto people's lawns and using the shot of their their hoses to uh take off their clothes and shower themselves. I mean, there's a certain limit. There's a certain limit where we need to protect the health and safety of our community. Some people are sometimes under threat. Uh kids do not need to see that. If you and me did that, you or I did that, we'd be in jail and we'd be, you know, our whole lives are, you know. You know, whether we claim mental health, that, you know, the issues or not, that's what we would, so. We need to reconsider it, but at the same time, there needs to be repercussions for those that are out there, you know? And uh I think, I wish there was a way we could be more aggressive in giving them the mental health uh uh help that they need. Um but um I just wanna let the residents know that we're listening to your guy, your guys' concern. And you know, absolutely, we we are uh, we are balanced in your favor, so um whatever we can do. But at the same time, trying to help those that are out there, um we're going to try to do, but we understand. I mean, I don't know if I mentioned it, but a couple of weeks ago, I ended up driving for breakfast to McDonald's and saw somebody just pull their pants down and. I hate to say it, but let's maybe explicit defecate here on on a wall.
Last two weeks.
Yeah, it was two weeks ago, yeah, it was uh. So we don't need to see that, so that's why I I am really willing to reconsider what the hundred sixteenth request is. And uh because they give us more information too, et cetera, but uh so. I just wanted to mention that and we need to modernize our city. That's what we're talking about here, a different way of doing things. Uh make sure that we err on the side of, you know, customer, good, great customer service. And we know that sometimes the process might be correct. But um if the customer service isn't on point, then people might uh get a different perception of what's going on. So other than that, I think there's not much more I need to say. Okay, and we have a closed session, item thirty to thirty-four. Mr. City Attorney, read, please read all five items, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh on number thirty, item number thirty is a conference with legal counsel. On existing litigation in California Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. In the matter of Peter Wang versus City of Hawthorne, that's L A Superior Court Case Number twenty one S T C V two two six six zero. Item number thirty-one will be a closed session with conference with legal counsel on an existing litigation. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. It'll be uh Ronnie Brown versus City of Hawth- Hawthorne, U S District Court Case Number two. Colon nineteen dash C V dash zero eight two three six dash F M O dash J. Um item number thirty-two will be public employee performance evaluation. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven subsection B. To conduct an employee evaluation concerning the City Manager, Montre Norris. Item number thirty-three will be public employee performance evaluation pursuant to. Government Code Section five four nine five seven subsection B to conduct an employee evaluation concerning the City Attorney, Robert Kim. Item number thirty-four will be conference with labor negoti- negotiators. Pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six subdivision subsection A. Uh name of labor labor negotiators will be interim City Manager Von Norris and interim Human Resource Director Irma Yusefie. Uh regarding Hawthorne Municipal Employee Association.
Okay, is there any member of the public that has identified themselves to uh talk about thirty to thirty-four? Okay, appears that there's no one that communicated with us, so oral communications is close ordered. We will now recess the uh City Council meeting to conduct a closed session. Um if we can go directly to the to the meeting.
Uh may we have two minutes, Mayor?
Um we'll open it up, we'll open it up and, you know, we'll see who's back there and who needs to step away. That's fine. Okay, so. This, uh we are now in recess.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, what should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people, two arms length. Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material-type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new, and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
The city of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks and can... in accordance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
... With respect to item number 30 in closed session, council was provided with the status and the report and guidance, and no reportable action was taken. With respect to item number 31, and this is with respect to the lawsuit of Ronnie Brown versus City of Hawthorne, the city council voted unanimously to approve a settlement in the amount of $35,000. With respect to item number 32 and number 33, after discussion, the city council voted unanimously to extend the interim city manager agreement until a position is filled for a permanent city manager. And with respect to number 33, the interim city attorney position for Robert Kim will be extended until a permanent city attorney position is filled. With respect to the last item, number 34, conference with labor negotiators,
Okay, so thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney, for reading all those items into record. And for the, and for the residents' benefit, everything was read into the record to comply with state requirements right now that we're in the COVID situation.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification, can I get from our city attorney? Who made the motion on items thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three, and who seconded on those items?
Thirty-one?
Yeah.
It was moved by Mayor Protem Valentine, seconded by the Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Vargas, and unanimously agreed.
Okay.
With respect to thirty-two and thirty-three, basically, they all came to a vote simultaneously without any specific person moving the item. So it just basically, everyone just agreed simultaneously unanimously on both, thirty-two and thirty-three.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, appreciate that.
This meeting is now adjourned, thank you, everyone.